All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get going because we have got a lot to cover today. Good morning and welcome to North Ridgeland Hills City Council Budget Work Session. It is eight o'clock a.m. and I am, I will call the August 2nd, 2024 City Council Work Session to order. A quorum of the City Council is present and the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act and the Texas Government Code and let the record reflect that the Council Member Mitchell is absent. He was duly chastised last night. Um, so, real quick, just a couple of things. I went over the, the budget and then we'll get started because I want to stay on track, but, and, and by the way, staying on track, the times that are on those agendas are kind of the overall suggestions of times how we get there. They're more guidelines. Um, so we want to try to stay there as best we can. Certainly no one's opposed to being out and finished early, but I have expectations that won't happen. Um, but I did make my list of my 12 favorite things in the budget, by the way, just so everybody knows, um, as I was going through all of it. I think we hit a lot of things that I, I think a lot of the voters, you know, talked about through the, through the election. One of the important ones, obviously, was road repair and doubling it from two million to four million was a, a, a great thing. Um, SROs obviously being addressed. Um, I think, um, the, the raise to both the police and the fire, the, both the schedule and the, and the, uh, the raise steps, y'all call them steps. We call it scheduling schools, sorry. Um, the efficiency audits in the three departments, development center, the development services, IT, fleet services, um, I think will bear some fruit. Um, the Six Sigma training, I think that's great for anyone, quite honestly. Um, the bad part is it makes people more marketable and, you know, you can make more money somewhere else probably. Um, don't say that. It's, it's a val- it's a valuable skill. Um, there's a few other things, eliminating Assistant City Manager position. Uh, you know, I loved the idea, by the way, and I know we'll get to a lot of it, promote the, the, uh, fund that'll promote people going to NRH, uh, restaurants, um, the, 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 the payback. I, I, I love that, um, because I wouldn't have thought of it, so I loved it more. Um, and then, kind of the, the app launch, um, to, I, I, I need to understand that a little better, uh, for to submit, uh, services request, how that's gonna be all set up and working, uh, at some point, but I love the idea. Um, you know, the, um, no new revenue tax rate and actually being under that, uh, obviously the no new revenue tax rate was a commitment that a lot of people were after, uh, for us one more time and being even below that just a little bit, a very little bit, but that's okay. Uh, still below, still below, uh, was probably, uh, one of the best things that was on there as well. Uh, so, anyway, those are just a few things that I had when I looked through all of it and got it, so I was very excited. I, I did ask Paulette quite a few questions because I was trying to understand certain things, um, that, uh, she helped make clear for me. So, having said that, Paulette, um, so we can stay, I, I just want to say I'm five minutes, so I'm 10 minutes ahead, you're getting it, so I'm feeling good. And thank y'all all for taking your time and all the hard work that goes into something like this. Um, I say hard work, I actually love doing stuff like this, so it's always the fun part of it. Right, Trudy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, so my introductory remarks, again, this intended just to give you a high-level overview of the budget as we go throughout the day. We will get into detail on each fund and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and discuss the, uh, kind of the recommended additions to base or what we call below the line. You'll have an opportunity to discuss and ask questions about that later on in the agenda. But again, I just wanted to give a, a high, uh, level overview of the budget as a whole. So, with that, so 2024 has definitely been a year of change. Uh, there's a new city manager, new management team, a new mayor, three new council members, and then the council held a strategic planning session on July 11th and 12th that resulted in new mission, vision, goals, and objectives. And that vision is to become the standard for transparent, resident-focused, fiscally responsible, business-welcoming municipal government in Texas. As far as the proposed budget goes, when we, when we, uh, start to develop it, we look at various inputs, uh, first, starting with the citizen survey, and then, uh, listening to council members, um, throughout the year, but, uh, the planning session was a big help in helping us finalize the proposed budget recommendations. We review public input and service requests, and then, uh, this year I met with every city department to review their operations and, and budget requests. So, starting with the citizen survey, just a, a quick review, I know you're all familiar with it and what the results were, but just to, to, to go through, uh, what our takeaways were, we received overall good ratings in quality of life, public safety services, water and trash collection, library, parks, trails and open spaces, and communications. We received low ratings in street conditions and traffic control and code enforcement. You will see more res- resources toward these areas in the proposed budget, and it's important to note that 90% of survey respondents said that no city services should be eliminated. Again, at the, at the planning session on July 11th and 12th, we ended up with, uh, what we're calling the North Ridgeland Hills House of Excellence. This is the way that Randy Pennington, our facilitator, kind of, uh, framed it and put it in a picture for us, but the council as a whole provided direction that resulted in what we're calling the House of Excellence. The foundation is the mission, which is to promote an exceptional quality of life for our community by being resident-focused, fiscally responsible, and business-friendly, along with our, our spirit values and a culture of excellence, transparency, and stewardship. And so the walls that hold up the future vision to become the standard are the seven strategic goals that the council developed. So, drive operational excellence in every area, become easier to do business with, steward the public's money well, engage residents to enhance connection with the city and their neighbors. I'm gonna have to put these on now. Revitalize neighborhoods and commercial corridors, improve safety, security, and infrastructure every day, and be a good place to work. And so that, that leads to the vision, which I stated earlier, to be the standard for transparent, resident-focused, fiscally responsible, business-welcoming municipal government in Texas. So, as a result of, uh, we've been doing a lot of listening, or I, and I specifically have over the last four months, and so I'm honored and proud to present a proposed budget that includes a plan for bu- public engagement and transparency, process improvement and efficiency studies, optimizations in revenues and expenses, doubling the amount for preventive street maintenance, and competitive compensation for all employees. Just to give you a, again, high-level overview of the revenue highlights across all the funds, but first of all, on property tax, our overall revenues in the proposed budget include the following: property tax, or the preliminary rate, as, as we call it at this point, it is equal to the current year adopted rate. The rate is slightly less than the no new revenue tax rate as we've calculated it preliminarily. This is, uh, primarily the result of certified values being higher than last year's certified values. There is more revenue to the maintenance and operations side of the, of the, of the budget of the tax rate. This is because of a decrease in the amount of debt service payment this year of, of about a million dollars, a change in the methodology, methodology in our excess collection and tax ceiling, the way that we calculate those in the truth and taxation calculation, and the fact that we're not penalized for property tax collections that we've been required to, to pay out. So, that over collections amount that we discussed with you at the last council meeting, um, we, we have had to pay out more in over collections this year, and the good news is in our truth and taxation calculation, we're not penalized for those, for those payouts. In sales tax, it does show a modest 2% increase. This is because of new businesses that we expect to come online in, in the current, in the next year, that fiscal year '25. The Peppa Pig is set to open in early '25. We actually met with them yesterday, and they are planning a soft opening in February of '25, um, with a grand opening in March that will culminate with spring break. So, you'll see that they'll, that, that the park will be completed and they'll start hiring and training in the fall, but they want to be very strategic about their opening timeframe and make sure they do it, do it correctly and have a successful opening. And then, um, in other revenues, interest income is up significantly due to an increase in interest rates. Building permits for the proposed budget are showing flat to what is the revised budget, but you'll note as Trudy goes through that or Chase goes through that, that the, that the building permits are up from what the adopted budget. We have implement, or included the implementation of a short-term rental registration program. So, you'll see that both on the expense and the revenue side. There's about $20,000 budgeted for a new software program that will allow us to monitor short-term rentals, get them registered, and also collect hotel motel tax on those. Uh, and, and then the, on the revenue side, there's $20,000 on, uh, permit fees that, um, would offset that $20,000 expense. We think that that'll be possible just from the short-term rentals that we're currently aware of, and then on the promos- in the promotional fund, there's $7,500 budgeted additional in revenues for the collection of hot tax on those. We also have implemented some cost recovery measures on the revenue side, including, um, recovering some of our costs on credit card processing fees. Those have increased significantly over the last several years, both because people are paying more things, uh, with credit cards and online, and also because we expanded our, um, options for online payments, um, with our implementation of a new ERP system. That has become such an expense that it begins to impact our ability to provide services under the current tax rate and, and all of that, so there's a plan in there to recover some of those costs. You'll also see a plan to increase EMS fees and also to monitor collections from, more closely from insurance companies and Medicare and those types of things. Um, we did a review this past year of our ambulance fees compared to surrounding communities and also our ambulance, our ambulance fee collection rates, and, uh, there's some improvement and some cost recovery that can be gained there, so you'll see that. And then you'll also see that we have reduced our internal service allocations, um, across all funds. So, what internal service allocations are, is, it is a fee that's charged to each fund, each department, that goes to our in- internal service funds, and those, uh, funds are, uh, fleet, facilities, IT, those types of departments. Uh, we've decreased all those except for IT, um, which has saved us some money, and it's also impacted revenues in the various funds. And then you'll also see that we have used a lot of reserves this year. So, uh, we mentioned at the last council meeting that all of our reserves are extremely healthy at this point. That's for a couple of reasons. One is just revenue over expense accumulation over the last several years. So, we spent more money than we anticipated, so we have more revenues over expense. It's also a result of interest income being, uh, extremely high and building those funds, um, even more so. What that does, it allows us to use, um, those reserves to purchase some one-time capital items or to assist with, um, with some of our expenses in various funds. One of, some things to note is that we are still on the recommended increases on public safety. We are still using ARPA funds to assist with that, and that is primarily because we have to spend those funds by, um, FY '26 or by 2026. So, that is one of the eligible uses for that. We are also allocating reserves in CCD of about $67,000 to assist in the, all the expenses that we have in, in the CCD fund or that we're proposing. And again, I mentioned the capital purchases. Another, uh, fund that has been created is an infrastructure improvement fund, and what that will be used for is long-term improvements and maintenance of all of our facilities, um, which, it's hard to believe that we've been in City Hall now. We moved in in 2016, so we've been in City Hall for eight years. So, it's already, uh, beginning to have some maintenance issues, some repair issues and things like that, that you'll see as, as you go through the capital, through the capital budget, but a lot of those are in the, now and in the future will be funded with this infrastructure improvement fund. And then proposed expenditure highlights. So, this year, the, as we started the budget review process and as the directors started their budget request process, they were directed specifically to look at efficiencies and, and, and take a hard look at all of their expenses in order to reduce costs, in order to, uh, move funds around and to fund any, any additions that they wanted, and they've done a great job in doing that. So, some of those efficiencies that, that we've highlighted are, one, as the mayor mentioned, the elimination of a vacant Assistant City Manager position. That position's been vacant for about three years. There were, we did have plans to fill that in the coming fiscal year, but I think with, again, the team we have in place and some of the reorganizations we've done, I don't think that that Assistant City Manager position will be necessary. So, that's one of the efficiencies gained in a position elimination. Um, we also noted over the last year, several, um, efficiencies. One is the in-house CDL training that was implemented by our Public Works Department. That, that was a federal mandate for some additional, uh, training required for CDL license holders. We figured out a way to develop an in-house training program that would meet those qualifications, and we estimate that saved us about $54,000 over the last year. Uh, I mentioned the degree haul-off charges related to Republic Services, and what that is, is basically spoils from our construction projects. We had noted that Republic, um, had begun charging for that, a significant amount of money. Um, that wasn't something that we talked about in our, in our contract renewal process. We were able to renegotiate with them, who is now covered under the contract. We have some efficiencies in our water meter replacement program, both in the cost of the water meters, but also in the maintenance costs going into the future that staff was able to negotiate on the front end before that project began. We've contracted out more park maintenance, which has allowed the Parks Department to eliminate one position. And then we did a heavy review of trainal- training and travel costs to reduce the amount that we're spending, uh, not necessarily the amount of training, but, uh, the amount of, of spend on, on training and travel. And then on the general fund side, um, we moved several things out of the general fund where we could and into other funds where it was appropriate, starting with, uh, $487,000 that we moved to the Parks and Recreation Half-Cent Sales Tax Fund that helps to, uh, support our NRH Center. Internal service allocations, I mentioned before, were reduced. We reduced the city share of insurance premium cost. That's primarily due to a high level of reserves, again, in our self-insurance fund and a need to not continue to build the reserves in that fund. Contributions to reserves, um, have been reduced as well, and that's primarily, again, we, we don't see a need at this point to continue to build reserves. So, you'll see, you, you'll see that we don't have as much as maybe in the past of planned contributions to reserves in, in all funds, with the exception of IT. We do have a transfer from the general fund to the IT fund to, that is a fund that has gotten to the point of being kind of low in reserves, and so we're planning to rebuild that. We've also moved some training, um, and other costs into the self-insurance, self-insurance fund where it's appropriate. Inflation is still something that is impacting our, our budget, um, to a significant amount. You can see on the slide the impacts in the various funds, but $91,871 to the general fund alone, just, just from this year. And that's largely due to an increasing cost of materials and supplies, as well as the cost of services. And then with regard to technology, there's a significant increase to software maintenance costs reflected in the budget of about $261,000. Um, and you'll see us begin to rebuild our IT reserves in order to make sure that we, um, have enough in our IT reserves to cover, um, future expenses and the additional maintenance costs, that kind of thing. And so I, I just want to compliment our staff, um, for the work that they've done. You might have noted in the, in the budget funds overview that it, it reflects only a 1.6% increase in the general fund-based budget compared to the adopted budget. This would not have been possible without the, the heavy review of expenses and costs and gaining efficiencies and the work that was done there. And so, uh, I just want to compliment our staff, our team. I set the expectations high for this budget, and they definitely rose to those expectations, and I appreciate it. And speaking of our awesome city staff, I just want to take a quick moment of your time to review some of the major accomplishments over this last year. First of all, we implemented the NRH Easy Streets Program. It was created and implemented to incentivize redevelopment within the Boulevard 26 in South Davis, um, corridor area. The first grant has been awarded to Omega Billiards, who will relocate its showroom to 7921 Boulevard 26. Malibu Jack's Indoor Theme Park announced their first Texas location, which will be in the former At Home Building, and they plan to open by the end of 2025. They actually state that they plan to open, uh, by the fall of '25, but I'm gonna push it to the end. I'm sorry. Let's see, the, the new hotel, True by Hilton, opened off of 183. It's a four-story, 84-room hotel, and in June, the hotel hosted the Texas Municipal League Board of Directors for their, uh, quarterly meeting. Well, we hosted the meeting here, but they stayed at the True Hotel. Um, also, 50 new retail businesses located in North Ridgeland Hills over the last year, filling 250,000 square feet of space. The retail vacancy rate is now the lowest it's been since 2004 at 6.3%. And then we continue to make great progress on our 2020 Street Bond Program. Major streets completed, uh, or near completion include Iron Horse Boulevard East, Iron Horse Boulevard West, Bedford Ullis Road is nearing completion, and then we have several, uh, projects that went under construction this year, including Glenview Drive East and West, Lariat Trail. Those are the major streets, Lariat Trails under construction. And then we have, uh, uh, under the residential side, the residential street side, we've completed nine residential streets thus far. Five streets are currently under construction, and you'll see, uh, this map shows the, that, it shows the streets and, that are completed or close to being completed in green. The street's under construction in orange, the upcoming and remaining streets in blue. So, we are on track with the 2020 Bond Program to, to complete all projects with, within the five to seven years that we promised to the voters and also within budget. We also completed the citywide street assessment, uh, project, and that also did subsurface assessments, and this will assist us in adding to our, our preventive street maintenance program and also planning for a future bond election. We successfully completed and entered into a Safe Routes to Schools grant agreement for, uh, improvement of sidewalks and crosswalks in the Smithfield Middle School area. The good news about this is, um, the, the agreement allows us to use transportation credits to fund our 20% match instead of using, um, cash out of our budget. Also, this last year, the city hosted an emergency management full-scale, multi-agency mass caregiving training in partnership with Birdville ISD. Other cities around the state are looking to this as a model training exercise, and our emergency management coordinator has been invited to speak at conferences around the state regarding this training exercise. War Patrol officers were funded through the COPS grant, and this grant will assist with funding those four additional officers over the next three years. We also made great strides in our officer recruitment. Over this, since October 1, we've hired 14 new officers. We're on track to be fully staffed by the end of the calendar year. And also, it's just important to note that nationally, that, that trend is improving, the ability to, um, recruit, recruit police officers. Because the Power Engaged Text Messaging Tool was launched, which allows an opportunity for people to provide feedback on their experience with our 911 services. It allows them to, to, to provide comments, feedback, and even thank yous to those that assisted them through our, our 911 services. We also implemented the Code Compliance Court. We also call it the Civil Court, so we may, we may hear a switch back and forth between those two. So far, since July of last year, 100 and case, 108 cases have been received by that court, with 65 of those being successfully resolved thus far. We also, uh, started on our water meter replacement program. 21,000 meters are being replaced. This project started in March of this year and is expected to take 15 to 18 months to complete. It also provides customers access to an app that allows them to monitor and manage their water usage. And again, we negotiated discounted pricing on the meters as well as discounted service pricing over the next 10 years. And then we completed several major ordinance updates, um, starting with my favorite and your favorite, the Backyard Chicken Ordinance. That was, was adopted this last year, along with the Community and Special Events Ordinance that allowed more community and special events for our businesses that want to have those, and also, uh, redo of our subdivision ordinance in line with the charter, uh, election approvals and, uh, new state law. We also started live streaming our council work sessions in the name of transparency and increased communication, and the NRHTX app will launch this year. Um, it's already kind of in the works in a, sort of a pilot program, uh, that will allow citizens to, uh, submit service requests and keep up with events and that type of thing. And in, in the finance area, or really citywide, our credit ratings were reaffirmed for AA2 and A+ by Moody's and Standards and Ports. It's as important because it gets us better interest rates on any debt that we issue. And also, we received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting again this year, as well as the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We also hosted several community events, including the Sounds of Spring Concert Series, our Veterans Day event, pop-up Easter egg hunts. The NRH Center had record attendance and revenues this past year. Average daily attendance is about 1,300 patrons, and the Grand Hall hosted 268 events and 33,500 guests last year. Uh, as a review of patron surveys and input, um, the library launched the homeschool meetup and science program, and also the mayor's reading, mayor's summer reading club continues to be a huge success. 2,112 participants have gone through this program as of the middle of July this year. 73,409 hours have been read and 5,081 have attended programs. Also, it's important to note that the library circulates a lot of materials daily. In June, they averaged 269 items every hour. And lastly, our, our employees received, and departments received several awards this past year, starting with, uh, our communications department received the Best Planned Social Media Campaign from the Texas, uh, it's TAMEO is the acronym, Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. This was for the 70th Anniversary Campaign, and it's also been submitted for an award, um, through Texas Municipal League. The, the City Secretary's Office received the Achievement of Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Clerks Association. They were one of 24 cities to receive this award last year. Our Planning Department received the Planning Excellence Award from the Texas, uh, chapter of the American Planning Association. They were one of 46 cities to receive this award. We received an award for Economic Excellence from the Texas Economic Development Commission, one of 73 cities to receive that award. The library achieved, uh, received the Achievement of Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. Only 73 libraries out of 552 libraries across the state received this award. And as I mentioned before, the Distinguished Budget Award and the Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting. I'm gonna take a drink of water. And then lastly, I'll run through some of the compensation and service enhancements that I've recommended for funding. It's important also to let you know that there are way more requests that come in. Uh, thank Trudy. What is that number? She, she counted them up. I think we had...
I think we have 161, uh, requests, and, uh, far less than half are completed. I think we have 161 requests, and far less than half are completed.
But starting with our maintaining competitive compensation. So, we've been talking about becoming the standard and going from Good to Great, and actually reading the book Good to Great. Being a great organization starts with great people on the bus and in the right seats on the bus. Competitive compensation is necessary to recruit and retain the best. Compensation, these compensation recommendations can be funded within the preliminary rate that is shown in your proposed budget. And again, just note that ARPA is being used to assist with the public safety increases. And so, what we're recommending is a 4%, on the sworn public safety side, 4% range adjustment October 1, and then there's annual step increase on April 1. We had implemented last year two steps that we called Tenured Steps, and that was Step 5 and 6. Step 5 was to, folks would move to Step 5 at eight years of service, and then Step 6 at 10 years of service. We're collapsing those to annual steps. We're recommending to do so. And the cost of this is just over $1 million, the general fund, and $220,717 in the Crime Control District Fund for the sworn police officers. On the general government side, I'm recommending a 4% merit increase October 1 and a 2% range adjustment. So, understand that the range adjustments on the general government side work a little bit differently, and Patrick will go into all of this in a lot more detail when we get to the Human Resources section of the presentation today. But what that means is anybody on the bottom end would receive a 2% in addition to the 4% on October 1, if they receive a good performance evaluation. And anybody on the top end would receive a 2%. So, that's different from steps, in that when you adjust a step range, they all get that 2% increase in addition to the other increases that are coming with that. We also have set aside some funds in the amount budgeted for this to adjust more difficult to fill positions on the general government side and a few positions that are out of market. The cost of this is $958,876 in the general fund and $605,596 in all other funds. And when I talk about adjustments for difficult-to-fill positions, the primary one that we'll be looking at is our Public Works Crew and Crew Leader. We've had a number of vacant positions in the area for the last couple of years. We have done some adjustments in the pay to be more competitive and different things like that, but we feel like more efforts need to be made in that regard. It is to the level that it begins to impact some of our service levels. So, I know you've seen complaints, for example, of when utility line repairs are made, and sometimes it takes us a while to come back through and completely repair the street. And that has taken us a lot longer. One of the reasons behind that is because of our short staffing levels that we've had for some time. And then other service enhancements recommended, again, efficiency studies and process improvement training. There are efficiency studies budgeted for three departments for a total of $300,000 across all funds. $100,000 in the general fund for the Development Services Review, $100,000 in the IT Fund, and $100,000 in the Fleet Fund. We also have budgeted for Lean Six Sigma Training for city leadership. There are a total of six additional public safety positions recommended in the budget that are funded from the general fund and/or CCD. There's one dispatcher that's funded, two school resource officers from CCD, and then three campus school resources officers from CCD. And what that is, is we have reached an agreement with Birdville ISD in order to start on a plan to provide armed security at every elementary campus in North Richland Hills. There are nine campuses, so this just gets us started. We're proposing to hire three in the coming year, and the district would choose where those officers go. But this is an 80%, 20% funding split, so the city would cover 20% and the district would cover 80%. Just a note, on the school resources officers that we have, adding those two additional SROs gets an SRO at every secondary campus, and that is under the current agreement split, which is 65/35. So, the city pays 35%, the district pays 65%. And then there's several grant-funded positions in the budget where the grant is no longer in play and/or we have a grant application pending that we're not sure we're going to receive. But these are for, two of them are for programs that we have already implemented. One is a mental health coordinator position, and the other is the Victim Assistance Program. And then the other piece of it is our COPS Grant Match. So, as I mentioned earlier, that COPS Grant assists with funding for those four officers for three years. And so, we will have a match for those three years, and so that just carries that forward. Also, improving streets, we've doubled the street maintenance funds from $2 million to $4 million utilizing reserves. We're planning to have a future bond election and enter into that process this coming year, and that would be to look at streets that need complete reconstructions, and there are several of those on the list. Again, the Short Term Rental Registration and Monitoring Program is recommended. I went through the costs and revenues associated with that earlier. Supporting North Richland Hills businesses in the Promotional Fund, we're recommending a Restaurant Reward Program for a total amount of $110,000. This program would be through an app that would allow residents or any patron of NRH residents to receive 5% cash back on what they spend at all of our 165 restaurants in the city. And then I mentioned the Self Insurance Fund, and that we are very healthily funded, wellness, health. And so, there are several initiatives in there to promote wellness in our organization, again, pushing towards becoming that great place to work. First of all, we would provide annual biometric screenings for our employees. In the past, we've done this every other year. We think it's important to fund that every year. It's part of our health and wellness sphere that we have. We will also provide onsite mental health services. We're still formulating what that would look like, but it's similar to, you may be aware that we've provided breast health exams and different types of exams onsite in the last couple of years. And so, this mental health services would look similar to that. We also will fund stress tests for all sworn personnel, so all sworn public safety. We would be bringing those stress tests in-house so that it's more convenient for them to just get it done right there. And we do fund stress tests for first responders in our current insurance program, but them getting to a place to get that done proves to be difficult, so we'd be bringing that in-house. Not doing it ourselves, we'd be contracting with the business for that. Employee recognition and incentive program. Through this fund, we will create a more robust employee recognition program, and also, we'll be looking at the incentive program that was kind of talked about at your planning session, where we would provide incentives to employees to provide efficiency recommendations that result in efficiency gains or cost savings. We will also be increasing our recruitment efforts by paying more for things like LinkedIn to promote our open positions. And then we'll be implementing employee engagement surveys regularly. So, the idea that was proposed in terms of asking a couple of questions periodically, and we'll be looking at implementing that. And again, all that would be funded through the Self Insurance Fund. There's some additional program changes and decision points that the council will consider today. Again, there'll be more time at the end where, after you've heard all of the funds and all of the details, there'll be more time to ask questions about these. There'll be more time, there'll be time dedicated at the end for you all to give us your input on which direction you'd like to go, particularly on the legal services decision. But one of those is we're proposing to move the Emergency Management Division into Administration and bring it into the City Manager's Office for two reasons. One, emergency management really is a citywide function. And two, it aligns that position and that effort more with administration. The state law actually says that the mayor of the city is the Emergency Management Director, so to speak. So, moving that position into Administration puts it more in line with that. We are also proposing to consolidate our Fleet Department into a division of our Public Works Department. This would gain more operational leadership through that department in managing our fleet and also more administrative support. And then lastly, but certainly not least, is the decision on a direction on our legal services. So, we have had an in-house legal services department for the last several years with our city attorney leaving this last year, and we've been contracting with the firm. A decision needs to be made as to whether we want to stay with an in-house attorney or legal services department or contract with the firm as we've done before. And so, your, my executive summary included a little bit more detail about that, and then there'll be more detail discussed in Chase's presentation later. But it is important to note that that doesn't include the prosecutor position. We have moved the prosecutor position back into municipal court. Prior to, about two years ago, that's where the prosecutor position was funded. Before, we have always had a prosecutor position. I say always, since we've been a court of record, we've had a prosecutor position. It's been contracted up until the last two years, I believe, and when it became full-time, for maybe three years. And it was moved into the city attorney's office for funding purposes. It is more important now to have a full-time prosecutor because that prosecutor has taken on roles within our civil court. That prosecutor serves as that administrative hearing officer. So, those are just some things to consider and think about as we get into that discussion later on today. And just in summary, again, it has been a year of change. It's going to continue to be a year of change. I want the council to know that the city staff is looking forward to this change. We see change as an opportunity, and we are looking forward to rising to the challenges that it presents, embracing the opportunities, and becoming the standard. Thank you. Happy to take any questions that y'all have at this point. But again, we're going to get into details as we go throughout the day.
Do I have anything? I want to, excuse me, clarify one thing. On the SROs that are going to the elementary level, that's going to be, that's going to be something called other than an SRO. Sorry. But those are, that is at a different, really a level and a different level of pay.
Right.
Even though it's going to 80/20, the reality is, their 20 is going to be 25 on what was the discussion prior anyway.
Right. So, that's, the position being proposed is a different position than our regular officers. So, SROs are regular patrol officer positions. The new campus SRO position is still a sworn, a certified licensed peace officer. It is considered for FLSA purposes part-time. And the only reason that is, is because that position, they will work the school schedule.
180-day contract.
Yeah, they'll work the school schedule under contract. So, they'll be taking their vacation and things like that when the school is on break. So, our intent there is we think it'll be easier to recruit for that position, recruit experienced officers, either retired officers or officers who prefer, would prefer to work the school schedule because maybe they have kids in school or something like that. So, that is, in general, how that, how that position works.
Thank you. And also, I just want to make one observation, just based on what, hearing and seeing what y'all put together and just how you've approached everything, I feel like, I'm going to use the word simplify. I think how I looked at some of the budget in the past when I was going through it, but, and how I'm looking at things now. It looks like there's, it's more simplified and easier to understand and a little more straightforward in how things are funded and how things are focused and how things are in their buckets, just based on all the hard work. That's a lot of hard work to do that, by the way, and I appreciate that. I will say this, and I know it does my heart good to see Jim College quotes anywhere. But the great people are also irrelevant if they're not allowed to be great. And I think you're, I think you're doing that a lot for the staff.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. And again, like I started out saying, I compliment this team. There were some high expectations placed on them for what I expected to see in the budget, and they have definitely risen to that challenge. One of the things you asked me too, that I also want to make clear to the rest of the council is the reserve level, and how did we get there? And why are we able to use these to fund, why are we confident in spending them down at this point? Again, like I said earlier, part of it is just revenues over expense over the years and how those accumulate and then interest income. But we also, our Finance and Budget Department worked very consistently with our auditors to confirm our fund balance amounts. So, we were in a position before where we weren't sure we could trust that that was the full amount in the fund balances. And through that process, we're able to confirm that the levels of reserves that we have in every single fund. Over the next year, we'll also be working on a policy to bring forward to you about what is a sufficient level of reserve to hold in each fund. We do have general guidelines that are used in the, I'm not going to get into terminology right, but things like GAS being our different fund accounting rules to not go below, for example, a certain percentage in the general fund reserves. But we feel like it's worth assessing our own needs and going into the future. But just wanted to let you know that a lot of work went into that, into reviewing that. And I want to thank our Budget and Finance Team, including Trudy. But as you all know, Chase and Jay are very new to this organization, and they hit the ground running, there's no doubt. And they have done excellent work in digging into our budget and financial position over the last, I don't know, Chase, you've been here four months?
At this point, it feels like eight years. But since February.
Since February, and then Jay started in...
Three months ago.
Yeah, so they've hit the ground running and done some excellent work, so. All right, any other questions? Okay. Well, I'm just going to return to my seat, but I can answer questions throughout the day as well, so. I don't know who's next. Craig. Craig's going to give you just an overview of the economy.
Thank you, Paulette, Mayor, council staff, citizens. Before we dive into, into the details of the day, let's go on a brief merry-go-round of our economy. Year-over-year, our NRH unemployment is, remains and is close to historical lows. Compared to last year, there was virtually no change. You can see the percentage there. We are, when compared to the region, we're consistently 1/2% below the DFW metroplex. And just in comparison terms, California currently is the, has the highest unemployment rate, which is almost 3/4% or percent greater than last year. Inflation, it persists regardless of what you hear. You may be hearing that the rate of inflation is declining. It is, but it's declining from an increase of 18% over the last three years. On our consumer expenditure side, we're not keeping up with inflation, as you can see. While up, e-commerce continues to be the rocket ship as far as growth with 11% year-over-year, dramatically outpacing our brick and mortar. You can see our brick and mortar actually trails the overall increase while food service is up just over 3%. The federal funds rate, which you're probably reading and hearing in the news, remains elevated. What's interesting is while it's probably going to go down here soon, it was 0% just a year and a half ago. Currently, our 30-year fixed mortgage rate is just below 7%. And the good news is, and possibly three, we're anticipating some rate reductions this calendar year. Finally, consumer confidence remains flat year-over-year, but when we compare to pre-pandemic levels, we're still a little negative and down almost a third from how we felt as a consumer prior to March of 2020. Conversely, we're always higher. We seem to be more confident than the rest of the US, which is typical. But we're going into a very contested election, which every four years, confidence typically dips. From a development trends perspective, interest rates, inflation, and construction costs really took a toll, as you can see on the year, fiscal year 2023. However, we are in a slight rebound and you can see where we are year-to-date as where we project year-end. City Point, as we all see when we come to work and for council meetings, is a majority of, of the new single family for this fiscal year. And just a friendly reminder, we are running out of room for brand-new construction. So we're having to look and we'll, we'll, we'll encourage and see infill development and redevelopment. From a new residential perspective, there are nine active subdivisions under construction around town. There are four additional pending subdivisions representing just over two hundred lots. We are kind of entering our last big wave of greenfield build-out. And the, the note that we'll probably look at year-over-year is how many lots remain? And when compared to the previous year, four hundred and seventy-six lots remain, but that's down eight percent. And we'll probably see that percentage continue to be a negative number just purely for the fact that we're landlocked and we're ninety percent filled out. Now, as far as single-family values and just sales are concerned, the market is becoming more active and deal-oriented. There's a noticeable increase in the number of listings. However, list prices are starting to slowly come down. Recall, they went dramatically up, they continue to go up, they're now starting to decrease in price. The key is buyers are no longer waiting for interest rates to adopt. And I think we were all hearing that phrase, and I'm probably going to butcher it here, but you marry the house, but you date the rate. As far as multifamily is concerned, right when the pandemic hit, you've had an influx of federal assistance, not only to businesses but to citizens. In addition, people were quarantined to remain inside their, their particular household or their apartment. So during that time, the residential, multifamily residential sector just happened to take advantage of that and raised rental rates by twenty-two percent in a three-year period. However, they've, they've been flat since, and that's because of an influx of multifamily across the United States, plus the fact that people now have the option to move elsewhere. Not to be captain obvious, but age of complex, of, of a multifamily complex does dictate the rate of the rent. You can see here, just built, our, our multifamily in North Richmond Hills, built before 2010. You can see the average rent per unit and the square, the rent per square foot. You can also see if there's been any change in that, in that, in that rate, and it's at the bottom zero. The difference with those that are newer, built after 2010, you can see also the comparison between just the mid-cities region. Just to point out the, the difference, I have listed City Point Delegate, which is, I've just been CEO'd recently or undergoing its final CEO at City Point when compared to Eighty-five Hundred Harwood, which was built fifty years prior. On a commercial standpoint, as Paulette mentioned, we're, we're the benefactors of a retail renaissance. There's just been an increased diversity in uses, which is not just the retail showroom anymore. We've, we've experienced a couple of gymnasiums, some entertainment and activity-based uses in some of our retail spaces. Record low, the last peak of nineteen percent was in oh-five. We also had a very high rate in 2021 due to the pandemic. We are a suburban community and we are not an industrial community. Whereas sixty percent of our commercial real estate is either in a retail business, a retail building or a restaurant building. And you can see here, we've benefited from that. From a retail perspective, you can see the number of buildings and square feet. As far as industrial, industrial vacancy is up, you'll notice that plus eleven percent because two businesses in North Richmond Hills that occupied industrial space actually were expanding and have moved on in the region because there just wasn't enough space in North Richmond Hills. However, I'm confident that those buildings will be occupied in very short order due to the demand. Year-over-year taxable sales, as I mentioned before, they're just slightly up, but not keeping up with inflation. Retail and restaurants alone represent two-thirds of the city's sales tax base. Just to call it out, you can see in 2023, we, retail was up by three percent, where it's just up one-point-two percent. I'd like to call your attentions to our restaurants, which enjoyed a really good year last year, combined over six, six percent. Whereas this year, they're just over three percent. But when you distill it down, you can see that fast food and fast casual are still holding ground with a six percent increase. People want it quick, they want it cheap, and they want to move on, which is challenging our sit-down and full-service restaurant uses, which is actually a negative this particular year. On the business trends and what's around the corner, the pace this year has been slightly below historical levels and it's really due to lending practices and elevated interest rates. However, as Paulette previously mentioned, activity is picking up, especially on some catalytic projects, with also a high, positive expectation that rates will improve and inflation will subside. In summary, we're just a really good benefactor of being in the best region, in the best state, in the best country in the world. We have a very good employment base. However, the interest rates and, and inflation has put a pinch on our consumers. A reminder, election season is cyclical and we'll get through that as far as its impact on the economy. Development has picked up this past year over fiscal year twenty-three. Again, City Point is a majority of that. Infill development and redevelopment are terms that we will continue to hear. Trends, single-family isn't no longer peaking, multifamily remains flat as far as rent. Taxable sales while up, they're not keeping up, and full-service restaurants are challenged. The new business activity, while slightly down, is, is hoping to increase going the next fiscal year. We have some numerous fast casual concepts on the way and large-scale entertainment. That concludes my portion, any questions? Thank you. I'll hand it over to Ms. Lewis.
Thank you, Craig.
Mayor and council, I do want to make sure that you all are aware that included in your executive summary is the certified tax roll for tax year 2024. That can be found on page seventy-two. We also have included the Tarrant County collection rate notification, that can be found on page ninety. And also our preliminary truth in taxation, which can be found on page ninety-one. We have a five-hundred-plus-page document, as you all are aware, and about three hundred slides today. I do have to tell you that page number ninety in your packet is from twenty-three. We do have an updated one for twenty-four. So of all the things that we put together for the past few days, we realized that one page does need to be updated. So the printed version that you have has the corrected twenty-four information and we'll be sure to get an electronic copy updated and sent out to everyone as well. For tax year twenty-four, the total appraised value for the city of North Richmond Hills is eleven-point-three billion dollars. The net taxable value, the estimated next, net taxable value is just above nine billion. Taxable new construction is one hundred and thirteen million dollars, and that does include new construction property that is still under protest. We talked a little at the last council meeting about what happens in that protest process and how that impacts our certifications. I wanted to be sure to point out to you all that our net, our estimated net taxable value does include properties that are not complete. And so what this chart is providing you with is an overview of what those properties look like. For those that are under protest with, that are still under protest with the appraisal review board, the total value is about one hundred and eighty-eight million dollars. And the estimated minimum taxable value is at a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. And what that functionally means for us is that until that process is complete, we are working with an estimate for those values. So we don't know exactly what those values will be until that process concludes. For incomplete properties, there are a hundred and seventy million dollars' worth of value with an estimated minimum value of about a hundred and one million dollars. And in process is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, which has an estimated net taxable value of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So again, this just ties into our previous conversation. Even though we get our certified roll, values do continue to evolve over time. Our average single-family home value for the market, that amount in 2024 is three hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. We'll compare that to last year a little later in the presentation. The appraised value is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And our taxable average value for single-family homes is two hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. In terms of some comparisons, for our appraised value and our estimated net taxable compared to last year, we're up about five-point-three percent. For our taxable new construction, we're down about nineteen-point-eight percent. This only means that last year, we happened to have had more new construction that came onto our roll compared to this year's new construction that was added. We didn't lose value, it's just that total difference between new construction one year to the next has changed. Our average single-family residential home market value has actually gone down point-five percent compared to last year. So we were at three-eighty-three and we're now at three-eighty-one. For the appraised value for single homes, that's up about six-point-one percent. And the taxable value for single homes are up five-point-seven percent. So again, people are going to pay property taxes not based on market, but based on taxable value. By category, we have had an increase in residential properties of about seven percent, about a two-point-three percent increase in commercial properties, a four-point-two percent increase in industrial, a significant decline in mineral. And you all have to know that that is a very volatile market when you're looking at things like, you know, gas revenue and royalty payments and values and that sort of thing. So we, we see this ebb and flow quite a bit. We're always grateful for the low gas prices, but that does have an impact when we're looking at our taxable values. And then in agriculture, we have seen a decline of five-point-two percent. By percentage, if we put industrial, mineral and those sort of things into one category and pull them out of commercial, they make up about one percent, commercial is at thirty-three percent and residential is at sixty-six percent. We did have a little discussion at the last meeting about classification of multifamily homes. Those, the number of properties that are classified as multifamily commercial for twenty-four includes sixty-one properties. That's out of one thousand two total commercial properties. So as a percentage, it's a very low number compared to the, the total number of properties. However, the taxable value is at one-point-four billion dollars, which is about fifty-three percent of the commercial properties. For our net taxable value history, when we look for a ten-year span, starting in fiscal year twenty-six, uh, twenty-sixteen, we can see that that value was a little over four billion dollars. And for this year, our net taxable value is a little over nine billion dollars. So apparently the efforts of Craig and, and our city council to enhance the overall value and use of our land has worked, and we see that in our values. TAD does provide us with a breakdown of how many homes we have by category or by price so that we can get a feel for how many homes we have valued in which price ranges. The top of the chart shows you for homes valued at over six hundred thousand, and these are market values, not taxable, but market values. We have about twenty-one hundred homes in the city that are at that amount. Between five hundred and six hundred thousand, that number is one thousand, eight hundred and nine. Between four and five hundred thousand, that's three thousand, four hundred and twenty-one homes. You can see our largest share for home prices is between three and four hundred thousand, and there are six thousand, two hundred and four homes in that range. Between two hundred thousand and three hundred thousand, we have five thousand, seven hundred, forty-six homes. Between one hundred thousand and two hundred thousand, yes, those do exist, we have, we have a total of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-one. And there are just a handful of homes that are below one hundred thousand in market value.
Is that homes or is that lots?
These are single-family homes.
Okay.
It is how they're classified with TAD as a single-family home, so it wouldn't be a vacant lot. It would be a structure and improvement on the structure.
Yep, okay.
The city of North Richmond Hills offers an exemption of thirty-six thousand dollars and a tax ceiling for seniors, as well as for disabled persons. And the tax ceiling means that the property owner will not pay more property taxes unless they have purchased a new home or they have done additions to their existing home. This year, two hundred and forty-seven new seniors and eleven new disabled persons exemptions were filed. Six thousand, three hundred and forty-seven, or twenty-eight-point-five percent of residential accounts have a senior ceiling. I know that we had a question last time about the increases we have seen in the senior tax ceilings, but also our change in population in terms of senior residents. And so currently, the census is showing sixteen-point-six percent of our residents are over the age of sixty-five. In 2024, that number was twelve-point-five percent. So we do see as a community that we're aging. Our average age, however, has remained very much the same. So even though we have some folks who are, who are aging, we also have a lot of younger folks. And so if we look at that median age, it has stayed around thirty-seven, thirty-eight for the last several years. Three hundred and seven accounts have a disabled person's tax ceiling. And we have one-point-five billion dollars in taxable value that is frozen. So when we talk about, once people receive that, that ceiling, then TAD provides to us then what that equates to in total taxable value, that cannot change. It is just frozen in time until there is a change at the property level. We have a total of five-point-five million dollars in ceiling revenue that's included in our certified roll. This chart shows the change from twenty-twenty-six, from, I'm sorry, from our, from fiscal year 2016 until the current fiscal year for our senior exemptions on residential accounts. You can see on, starting in 2016, we are at twenty-two-point-nine percent, and we're now at twenty-eight-point-five percent. When we compare the city of North Richmond Hills to other communities in terms of the exemptions that we offer, this chart gives you an overview. Twenty percent for the homestead exemption is the most that the state of Texas will allow for a city to implement. The city implemented this twenty percent increase, it was a net increase for us a couple of years ago. And so you can see that we do have neighbors who offer varying amounts, ten percent, seven percent, and some don't offer one at all. For the senior exemption, again, that is a dollar amount, not a percentage. And that is a reduction that happens based on the appraised value of property. Disabled persons exemptions often mimic the senior exemptions, but they don't have to. And so the, the, the far column also shows the difference between what cities are offering for that category. We did think it was important to note the difference between market value and taxable value, which really speaks to the policies that city councils have adopted in terms of exemptions and how that impacts what people are paying in their tax dollars. For the city of North Richmond Hills, we see on average a twenty-five percent reduction from market value to taxable value. And so again, that speaks to the policy decisions of the city council to allow for and to adopt the sort of exemptions that benefit taxpayers. You can see us in comparison to some other communities. As we discussed in our last meeting, Tarrant County collects property taxes on behalf of the city and other taxing entities. They provide to us a standardized letter that tells us what we have collected in relation to what they anticipated that we would collect. Anything that they deem to be different between those two numbers is what they call excess, unless of course you collect less. And this report provides you with the percentage that they anticipate us to collect going into next year. It's 2024 because it's based on the tax year 2024, what we actually received in 2023, 2022, and also 2021. Where you see that nineteen-point-twelve percent for 2023, that is where we experienced a lot of refunds that we had to issue to ratepayers. So at the last meeting, we talked a lot about, we saw activity in our So at the last meeting, we talked a lot about, we saw activity in our delinquent accounts and also in our penalties and interest accounts where we were actually paying out net more than we were collecting in those areas. And so that's why we don't find our collection for twenty twenty three to be at a hundred percent. However, the county anticipates for twenty twenty four that we'll be at a hundred percent. This, this is not my opinion. This is the, the information that we received from Tarrant County. And this has to be used in our calculation of our property tax rate for next year. And that's why this particular piece of information is important as we move into, as we move into the next slide. I'm happy to take questions you have about the tax roll.
So let me ask you one quick question. So we know what properties we have.
Yes.
Right? Do we know that, how, how do we compare completeness from the standpoint of what, what we have as far as our list and what TAD has? Of course, our list that is associated with us, that they don't leave some off.
When you say completeness, do you mean appraisal completeness or construction completeness?
Just the, the idea of the, just the completeness kind of saying, you know, from an accountant's perspective, the completeness test. How do I know everything that's on my list is on their list to say they have all of our properties on there? So we get, yeah.
That we've done our own audit and reconciliation of, of the two listed properties. I can tell you, we've not undertaken a project like that where we've looked at all of our addresses and all of our details regarding individual properties and compared that to TAD. There's certainly something we could look to undertake, but since I've been with the organization, that is not the sort of review or reconciliation that we've undertaken.
I, I was just curious with the IT issues that TAD had, it made me a little concerned that maybe they may not have everything like they should, but I don't know. I mean, I'm just kind of shooting in the dark on that. The other is, is when you talk about commercial breakout, um, you want to, i- is there a way that we're going to break out where this is the multifamily part of commercial and this is the non multifamily part of commercial? Is that what you're attempting to do?
So we can. What we have typically reported on is the major categories, which include commercial, residential, industrial, so on and so forth. Because we've had questions about how much of the commercial is actually multifamily, we wanted to be sure to answer that question. It's not a, it's a subcategory, not a major category for classification purposes within TAD, but we certainly can make that part of our reporting so that that's something that's clear and understood.
Okay, that sounds good. Then the last one is, is that when the, I know that the school districts have taken on going down the TAD at their meetings and talking to them about their new thresholding every other year, five percent thing and how it's going to affect them. Have we taken on what the, what that affects to us, any sensitivity analysis and talked to TAD about what we believe that affects us one way or another? Not that it's going to make a difference in talking to them because they're determined to do what they want to do, which is, I, I don't have a grouse with that at all, but have we, have we done that to say, how does that affect us going forward? Cause you were used to one trend and now that's going to blow up all trends.
So we do attend entity meetings with TAD. They host them this time of year, typically every month. We are talking directly with the chief appraiser and his team about what they plan to submit to the board. Also what they believe will be the outcome of some of those discussions based on feedback that they have received from their board members. They are well aware of the impact that it has for the seventy two entities that they are creating values for. Certainly, we're not alone in how this impacts us. But frankly, they also understand all they can do is make a recommendation that the board ultimately decides. And so as an organization, we certainly are keyed into and in a lot of conversation with the TAD group. But, you know, we, we defer to whatever their board decides and, you know, we, we have to assume our rates based on the values whenever they are certified.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have?
Uh, just some clarification. So based on the recent changes they made, would we, would our taxable revenue as a city not change for two years? Is that how that would work?
That is essentially how that would work.
Okay.
Could work. But if we have new construction that comes online, then they would still add that value. That still is January one for new construction activities. We also would still send to them when we have permits and changes for redevelopment or those sort of things that we would already communicate to them. So it's not ending that communication. It's just their proactive annual process. They typically have gone through to go back and reassess all properties that they are going to pivot. Likely it will mean that we'll see, because we won't see increases year to year as much. It does mean every other year, we're likely to sort of see big fluctuations. So we're going to see a little more, a little less consistency in, in those valuations. It won't be as incremental. We're going to see, I think, a little more drawing changes in our values.
I'll just say this, in thinking about it, we may, we may think in undertaking one, like the completeness that I was just going to make sure their list and our list are the same. But the other thing I might think about, and, and I've been kind of pondering this a bit, but is if we look at the list that they have for the appraisals, and I know this is more relevant in, in the downtown Fort Worth area, of dramatically underpriced commercial buildings, like dramatically underpriced commercial buildings, that we may have some ideas of saying, some of our, especially commercial seems to be not really residential, are underpriced or undervalued on their list, that we may point out to them and say, hey, you might take a look at this one because you do have appraisers doing something that we're paying for. So I, I maybe suggest that as, as an undertaking as well because we're, we're moving into a new world. I'm not disagreeing with what they're doing because people are burdened and they're having a hard time holding their homes. And so wherever we can help and things like that, that's great. I'm just thinking from our standpoint, if we look at things that might be undervalued on the list or make sure that everything's on the list, that it's ours. Might be something we start looking at just to kind of curb some of that just a little bit.
Sure, that's, we certainly want to do that. On to everyone's favorite, the tax rate. For the current fiscal year, the combined tax rate for properties that are located within vertical ISD is two dollars and nineteen cents. Lots of decimals after that, but essentially two dollars and nineteen cents. For those properties that are located within the city that are part of the Keller ISD, their tax rate is about two point, uh, two point eight dollars. So you can see in this chart a breakdown between the total adopted tax rates for the current year. So this is not fiscal year twenty five. This is just for the current year. What that is for vertical ISD and Keller ISD for Tarrant County, Tarrant County Hospital and the, and Tarrant County College, and also for the city of North Richland Hills. City property tax rates are calculated based on several different factors. One is the portion of our total value that is needed to pay for any outstanding debt that is associated with our tax rate. The other is our maintenance and operations rate, which goes to our general fund to, to fund operations. There's also a component that we calculate called the voter approval rate. The state doesn't have a cap on that of three point five percent over the no new revenue rate and also new construction value. So we talked at the last meeting about how new construction value is added to the role and it's not something that drives the rate down. It's just added as additional value based on that year's additions. For the current year, our adopted property tax rate is four point eight nine three eight nine. The general fund portion for maintenance and operations is point three one three five eight three and the debt service portion is point one seven five eight oh seven. Over this last year, there are several things that are impacting the calculation of our property tax rate. First, we have the fact that we are paying less than debt service. Again, we talk a lot about how we schedule ourselves for future year payments to be less than the current year. And so by not issuing any more debt, we have a reduction on our debt service side of nine hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. Again, we talked about the fact that we have issued lots of refunds over the last year. That is something that impacts our property tax rate. And the total amount that is included in, in this year's calculations is one point one million dollars. So that's revenue we thought we were going to get this year that we did not. We actually had to, to issue refunds. We also have four hundred and twenty four thousand dollars worth of new tax ceiling, um, total revenues. And so again, as we have more properties that are subject to these ceilings, the net growth over the last year has been about four hundred thousand dollars. And then lastly, the state did adopt what is called a circuit breaker cap and we'll go over the details of that on the next slide. This is the first year that that has gone into implementation. And so there is a limit to how much these properties can go up from one year to the next. And that creates what we call a cap loss, meaning because, because above a certain amount, we cannot have values go up anymore, that becomes a net revenue loss to the city. And that is disclosed to us on our certified role from the tax, uh, uh, from the tax, uh, from the chief appraiser's office.
So can I just say one thing? So I know that you're refunding from previous years because a lot of the protests, they don't, they don't pay the money before you get it back. With it being flat at TAD, the only thing that can happen is it goes down.
That is accurate. That is accurate. Yeah.
Instead of getting any more to offset, because I'm assuming there was some offsetting to the, the refunds, that there were protests that didn't go their way.
Right.
And some that were, like we had in the, uh, eight and nine, the school district, there was our uncollectibility of property taxes skyrocketing because of the economy and the crash. But the, uh, I would expect then that that refund number might escalate because I'm pretty sure people are going to protest still. I don't think they'll stop protesting.
I agree.
So we can count on refunds versus continuing this trend versus the other.
Yes, yes. And that, and that's part of, you know, when we get the information from Tarrant County telling us that they anticipate that we're going to collect it a hundred percent, we, we don't budget on that basis because we certainly don't want to put ourselves in this reoccurring loop of expecting revenues that we are not confident that we will receive.
Yeah, you're reading my lab.
I love when that happens.
Hey, sorry to delay. Can you back it up and just go over the cap one more time, the circuit breaker? I'm just not catching it yet.
Okay, so this is information directly from TAD's website. And so I want, you know, everyone to see the details of what the circuit breaker is. So the state legislature passed a new law that went into effect in twenty twenty four. It's considered to be a pilot because it was adopted to be in effect for twenty four, twenty five and twenty six tax years. I cannot say with certainty if it's going to continue after that, but once you implement a tax break, it becomes pretty difficult to take it back. Real property that's valued at five million dollars or less, this is not talking about homesteaded properties. They already have their own. There's already a cap in place for them. But if you have real property valued at five million dollars or less, there will, there is a twenty percent limitation on the net appraised value of that property from one year to the next. So we typically have only had caps in place for homesteaded residential properties. That has now been extended beyond that to include these additional properties. So regardless of what is happening in the market and the actual value of properties, there is a net limit from one year to the next for them to increase in appraised value at twenty percent. So where we, where we'll probably start to see that in roles going forward is that the market value will have a bigger gap between the market value and appraised value because the market value could go up thirty, forty percent. But that cap that creates the appraised value will limit that growth from one year to the next to twenty percent.
Would, I mean, can you give me an example of, I, I'm just, it's hard for me to believe something would go up higher than twenty percent in one year. Like what?
It's entirely possible that an office building, the value of an area, because the area has become redeveloped and in general, sort of the dirt is more valuable in that area. The building may not have changed. Maybe there's no new construction. Maybe there's no net difference. But the actual value of that property, including the land, business, personal property, so on and so forth, could be worth more because of the cumulative impact of all the economic conditions. It could happen.
So like Peppa Pig comes in, now suddenly this vacant lot is fifty percent more expensive.
Absolutely.
Also a vacant building, say like the Palm Thumb that's now VOS. It would have been very, very low, Palm Thumb, no expansion to the building, however, a new occupant.
That seems like a crazy situation then, because if you have an operating business versus a vacant building, it obviously should probably go up more than twenty percent. And we're saying now there's a cap.
This is passed in the state legislature and is effective as of twenty twenty four. So this is the first tax year.
Who are we sending to Austin? I'm just kidding.
Really quick, so correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. This was really passed for homes, is that correct?
I'm, I don't want to speak to anyone's intention of who they were trying to benefit.
Point of this was for homes because we're looking at the other states, what's happening at someone that's three bed, one bath house in California now has become triple the price in the market. And so I think they want to try to limit that in the state taxes. My assumption is that people aren't priced out.
Because homesteaded properties already have the ten percent cap, um, this is twenty percent. So I don't know that this would be targeting residential homes. Now, if theoretically, if it's a home that is not homesteaded, for whatever reason, then that would be a different situation. But because there's already a ten percent cap in place for residential homestead, I think residents are covered by previous legislation.
You're correct. The, the ten percent was there for the, I, I'll tell you what, my, and my personal example was that if you remember in twenty fourteen, TAD had a absolutely horrible IT blow up back then and, and they messed up all the values dramatically and it cost all of us lots of money from a public perspective. And then when they finally got the valuations right in fifteen and back on, I was, my house property has a six year backlog of the ten percent. So it's been going up ten percent every year, right? Just because it's the cap. So that cap was already there for the residential. This was commercial when that discussion was, well, I'll supposition here that this was the, this was the commercial side.
The city's designated officer cannot certify the truth in taxation calculation until both the certified role and certified collection rate information is provided to city council. And that's what we're doing today. Tarrant County provided the collection rate to us on July the twelfth. Again, it's included in your executive summary. And TAD provided the certified twenty four tax roll to us on July the twenty fifth. A TNT draft is included in your proposed budget documents and we're going to go through the highlights of that. The twenty twenty five preliminary no new revenue tax rate is point four eight nine eight three seven. We're calling this preliminary because until we officially presented the other documents to you, we could not deem it to be the actual no new revenue tax rate. This is based on the rate that would produce the same amount of taxes if applied to the same properties in both years. Our voter approval rate is point four nine three zero two one. This is the no new revenue O N M portion of the rate plus the cap of three point five percent. Any unused increment, an unused increment essentially acknowledges if in one year you didn't go all the way up to your voter approval rate, the state allows you to bank the difference and they call it an increment. And so they allow you to bank that and use it in the next year if you want to. So that is included in the total voter approval rate plus the debt rate for that tax year. So the voter approval rate again is point four nine three zero two one. The no new revenue rate is point four eight nine eight three seven. Included in the city manager's proposed budget is the preliminary tax rate of point four eight nine three eight nine. So again, this rate is less than the no new revenue rate and is the same as a current fiscal year adopted tax rate. In terms of how that breaks down between maintenance and operations as well as debt service, on the M, on the M and O portion of the rate, that is point three three one four three two. And for debt service, that is point one five seven nine five seven. Compared to last year, you can see that there are about two pennies that are switching from M and O to INS. Same total tax rate, but there is a shift within the subcomponents of the tax rates. And if we compare what this means for the average. And if we compare what this means for the average single family home value, the state does require in our disclosures that we do this analysis and provide it to the public. Last year, our single family residential taxable value was $269,976. This year, that amount is $285,397. The total test, uh, tax bill for last year would have been at about 1321. And for this year, that's estimated to be at 1396 for a total difference of $84.47. Couple of things I want to be sure to point out, the tax rate is the same.
The reason that the total tax bill is different is because of the taxable value change. That is going to vary per home. The city is not in a position to run for every resident, all their scenarios. We encourage people to go to Tarrant County, to tarranttaxinfo.com in order to review their individual property. We certainly know that it depends on how your protests go in as to what happened on your total taxable value. But we do want to be clear, based on the difference this year compared to last year, of the average taxable value, what that net difference could be. There are several steps that the city council will need to take in order to, um, move forward with the tax rate process. The first thing is that the city council sets the proposed tax rate. While the budget does include one that is recommended to you by the city manager, again, that is less than the no new revenue rate, the city council officially sets that rate. So on August the 12th, we do have an ILE schedule for the city council to set that. City council also sets the public hearing dates for our tax rate. Staff has recommended that to happen on, of the action I have to be on August the 12th and for those meetings to be on August the 26th as well as September 5th. I want to point out, we typically have done one public hearing. We are recommending to have two this year. Also, the second one scheduled for September 5th is on that day because we are required to have the, the public hearing within seven days of whenever council will take action. So the date is selected to comply with some state law requirements that we have. And staff does recommend the date of adoption to be on September 9th, which is during our regular city council meeting. I'm happy to take questions that you may have.
How much, gosh, sorry.
It's very small, very sensitive.
How much is the increase in total dollars in revenue that requires us to do a public hearing for a tax increase? Last year it was around $600,000. What is it this year?
So I think you asked two questions. Because the, we have to have public hearings, whether we were increasing the tax rate or not, we, we would have public hearings.
The, the one that says tech, public hearing for tax increase, what is that?
So the, we have to have a notice of a public hearing and the language depends on what's happening with the rate. So the language would update if there wasn't an increase. Um, in this instance, because we have new construction that has hit our role, again, even with the same, even with the same, um, tax rate, it ends up being a net revenue increase to the city.
Right, but if an individual home went up in value and we have the same rate, then we are collecting more money from that individual home. So I want to know the amount of money that the city is taking that requires an increase on that individual home because their appreciation.
It is not on a per home basis.
Sure.
We have to, the, the, so as an entity, we have to look at our taxable value in whole because our tax rate does not distinguish for the purpose of our rate and also our disclosures depending on what happens at the individual property level. So it's the aggregate.
Let me rephrase the question then. How much would we, how much less would we need to take overall in order to not put a tax increase on the public hearing?
We would have to have the same net revenues as the previous year.
And so I've got 44 million to 48 million, is that the number we're using on taxes? But that's not property taxes though, so. Current property taxes, last year was 25 million, this year's 29 million.
On the general fund side of the house?
Hmm, yeah, yeah.
But we also have, the, the tax rate also impacts the debt side of the house, so it's, it's the total amount in revenue, it's not just one of the first.
I feel like I have a, I'm not trying to be rude, I'll take it that way. I feel like I have an easy question, I'm not getting an easy answer, right? So my question is, if we're going to hold a public hearing that says, hey, the city's raising taxes, right? Because people's values potentially have gone up, I'm just saying, what do we have to do to not do that?
I would have to run some calculations and get back to you. That's not live math that I can direct.
And I totally understand that this doesn't apply to every home, that every home's different, some valuations have gone down. I'm, I'm just curious as, I want to just try and see, what is that number?
Sure, we can run some calculations.
But also understand that's a, that's a function of the way the state law is written. So even in years when we decrease the rate and there's any amount of additional revenue generated, um, to the budget overall or to the, from the property tax rate, we have to put that, so that, I'm just saying that, not trying to be difficult, but it is a difficult number to get to and it's a function of the state law. So sometimes we've said we've been, we're increasing taxes and we're actually not. That's, that's not.
Below the rate and.
Yeah.
Right.
And we must, yeah.
And I guess it's interesting too, because we have two competing, um, arguments, shall we say, our messagings, um, where on one hand, we're doing a public increase, a public hearing for a tax increase, but on the other hand, we're setting the rate below the no new revenue rate, right? I mean, these two seem to be in conflict to me. Uh, and that's going to be a, a difficult thing to message to people because they're going to see, well, this is if you're setting a tax increase and then I'm going to be, but I'm doing it below no new revenue, we're actually taking less money theoretically from the same people than we did last year.
So we have many discussions about the truth in taxation form, um, across the state. Um, we have many opinions about how that practically plays out, um, for taxing entities, um, as well as the disclosures that everyone has to do. Um, I would lack in my opinion, what I will say is, um, the issue of the no new revenue rate and an increase in taxes, you are accurate that they are not using the same calculation to come to a conclusion. Um, our truth in taxation form is going to factor in things, including the fact that we have had to issue refunds for people of property taxes that we believe that we were due and that we had to refund that money. And so in calculating our property tax rate, it essentially allows an opportunity to make up for those refunds. It does mean that the rate then is impacted. And when we look at new construction, all changes in valuation, plus we essentially get to try to recoup some of that refund money, that the total revenue in dollars, not the same thing as the rate, the total revenue in dollars could be higher than it was in the previous year. And we have to disclose that to the public. You know, as an organization, we certainly have inflationary considerations and other kinds of things. If we take in the same revenue and yet have escalating costs, um, it certainly puts us in a different position when we compound that over time. Our tax rate is also something that is impacted by the previous year. It's not a standalone calculation. So we're having to sort of wait for pieces of information from other entities. Uh, one of the things we spent considerable, considerable time talking about in the last meeting is we're one fifth of the process. There are so many other parts that impact our overall property tax collections that we don't get to control. You know, we don't actually, you know, we can't say when someone's going to pay us. And so those sort of things affect our revenues and also affects how we have to do our calculations.
Yeah, so I was just going to say, that's great explanation, Trudy, but without giving your opinion, but I think you can understand. But as long as we have new construction values, we're always, it'll be extremely difficult to, and I would say on next to impossible to fund the budget and get to a rate where you didn't have to publish a tax increase. So, so, so there's that. And then I also didn't make this point as much as, as clearly as I wanted to in my intro comments, but I'll just say that this level of tax rate will be difficult, if not impossible, for us to achieve in the future because we gained a lot of efficiencies this year, but also because we're funding a lot with reserves and we're supplementing our public safety increases with our best deal. So, um, so as Trudy said, each, your tax rate, even though you do it each year, setting it, it is not standalone and, and what you set this year will impact where we can go next year. So I just want to make the point that, because I knew that would be a question that come about, okay, can we go lower on the tax rate? If you, if you did, we won't, we won't be able to achieve, achieve that same rate and you'll be looking at an even higher tax rate, tax revenue increase to fund just our core services. Does that make sense? So I know that, I know it's a long answer, but essentially it's a function of that state law that there's almost, it's almost impossible to get to a point where we don't have to say it's a tax increase, whether it is or isn't.
I get it. And I think it's definitely sometimes going to be necessary to do it. And this could be one of those years very well. Um, I think this is definitely where the budget workshops or, or budget roadshow is going to come in handy. Uh, we need to get in front of any potential miscommunication about what's happening here just because it is, it's complex and it's not communicated well and, and we don't have a way to communicate it well, or maybe we need to find a way to communicate it well, in my opinion. Also, I, you know, I understand, I guess, the trajectory problem here, especially when we have caps and whatnot. So if you're not keeping pace, then you're falling behind, you're on a treadmill, but you're about to fall off, that kind of stuff. Um, so my main concern here is how do we demonstrate to the citizens in accordance with our new goals, right? That we're stewarding well what resources we do take, right? Uh, because we know it's not our money and that they're trusting us to provide services. Uh, we just need to show them that we're doing that, we're finding efficiencies, we're cutting like this wonderful list that you've created, right? And that we're communicating all of those things. And that's my, my main thing, expectations.
Yeah, and, and so we, we accept that challenge and we are rising, rising to that. Uh, you'll see, and I think you've already seen just in the way, again, this is the starting of the public, the public, uh, process and discussion of the budget and it's the start of the council's consideration of the budget. So we're taking that very seriously and I think the way that we've laid out the schedule, including the budget roadshows demonstrates that it is our intent to, to communicate as clearly as we can, uh, where the tax rate is, why it's that way, what it funds, what it doesn't, all of those things. So we accept that challenge and hope to be able to, and Mary's already been working hard on communication pieces for those budget roadshows and also in preparation for the public hearings. So, um, so I, I think I understand what you're asking. Um, we, we will make every effort to communicate and especially the efficiencies and cost savings that are included in this, in this question.
Okay, let me, just pardon my reasoning for saying all the things I did about TAD early on because I, I don't know if everybody appreciates the gravity of, of everything that's changing at TAD for us and for everybody else. They are shifting the burden back to the taxing authorities to be thrifty, basically, and not live off of the appraisal increases. And I think that's where, that everybody's been able to say that those cute little things of I reduced your taxes, when the reality is that nobody really did because it was being covered up with appraisals. I, I have a, I have a house on Lake Grand Marine and if I could sell it for the appraised value that Hood County has for it, I probably would sell it tomorrow. Um, and they're not very amenable to a conversation either. So this challenge is going to grow dramatically and we have to realize there's one county in the state with 254 counties, is that right? Yeah, 254. Um, with, there's one county in the state that has undertaken what our county has done. Down with the infrastructure, it'll happen more and more. Um, and I think the prior leadership of TAD had created a lot of distrust, there's a good word, um, for what was going on, which, which then made that pendulum swing way over. Uh, like I say, once you're way over on one side or way over the other, it always swings back. We just swung the other way dramatically. Um, so we're going to have a lot of this, the, the past of making these decisions off of appraised values and getting to live with stuff easily and going, oh, I reduced your taxes, when that was a giant lie anyway, but, um, the, the reality is we're, this is, this is the first of many years this is about to occur where we're going to be struggling in these conversations, much more so than we ever have before. Just FYI, but just trying to level set because this is going to be some difficult math going forward. Am I right?
You're very right.
Thank you. I'll research the city council budget work session at, what am I, 9:46. Um, we'll start right back at 10 o'clock, right on schedule with HR and Patrick.
Okay, it's 10:01. Let's get back, let's reconvene the city council budget work session. Patrick, you are on, buddy.
All right, thank you, mayor. Good morning, everybody. Uh, so I do want to cover this morning, uh, the city's recommendation for employee pay and benefits. But before I do that, I always like to kind of cover information, uh, in, in, regarding the city's ability to recruit and retain employees. So I, I'm going to throw some, some statistical information as to kind of how I think the, uh, uh, city is doing, uh, with regards to recruitment and, uh, retention. Uh, then, then I'll go into the, uh, recommendations for pay and benefits. As I'm going through the presentation, please ask questions. So I do have a slide at the very end that says, hey, ask questions, but, uh, as I go through, don't hesitate to, uh, to stop me and say, hey, uh, let's talk about that for a second. So, so I'm going to start kind of at a really high level and then I'm going to drill down with some of these numbers as far as our turnover rate. So you can see this year, uh, we're projected to finish up at about 15% as far as our turnover rate, which is going to be slightly higher than our 10-year average, which is around 13%. Um, last year was 12%, so we saw a little bit of, uh, of an increase just over last year, even compared to the last 10 years. You know, I would say with respect to that, there's nothing that are significant red flags to me and as I drill down, I think you'll see that. Uh, however, uh, we've talked a lot, Paul let's introduction, talked a lot about change that has occurred within the organization. And I think anytime that you see change or you have change, uh, within an organization, that's going to create some uncertainty and it's going to create, uh, maybe some turnovers, some people looking at, uh, maybe evaluating where they're at in their careers and looking at making a change. So I think that's.
It's that, he fell short of saying it's that new city manager.
Yeah, I'm not going to say that. Uh, so I think we're seeing some of that, but let me get into a little bit more of the specifics regarding our turnover. So I like to categorize kind of why employees have, uh, left the city and these are the categories, uh, broad categories that we have them in. And I've highlighted just some where maybe there's some differences from this year to last year. Uh, you're going to see cities or employees, we do, by the way, we do conduct exit surveys of our employees as they leave. Um, we try to talk to everyone as they leave, but unfortunately not everybody is willing to, to, to talk, but we do, uh, exit surveys, um, and, and provide that feedback to the departments. We're showing this year compared to last year, about 10 employees left, uh, for another city or maybe government agency, it could be state, uh, county, uh, school district, whatever the case may be, accepted another job, you know, on a high, on the high side, but again, kind of in line in previous years. We had employees indicate this year that they're leaving for personal reasons. Um, it's a little bit higher than in previous years. Again, I think maybe with the turnover that just might, uh, we've had an impact here. Moved, employee might have moved, they got a family member that they're going to care for or maybe work closer to home. It's those types of things that we included in personal reasons. Performance issues, we do, uh, have, we do try to find the right people, uh, for the bus, uh, but sometimes we're not always successful. And, uh, so that we do help employees kind of find maybe a better fit for them at times. So we do, uh, let people go for performance reasons. And then retirements, this is one that. And the retirements, this is one that, uh, is a little bit, uh, higher than in years past. So I would anticipate that this trend will probably, uh, fall off, uh, in, in, in future years, but we did have some, a few more people retired this year. When we're looking at separations by department, uh, we did experience higher turnover in the police department, probably more so in years past. I've differentiated the difference between the non-sworn and the sworn employees. Um, public works department, uh, we typically see some higher turnover in, in, in public works and parks and mainly at the maintenance worker type level, uh, because it's, 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 it's a very competitive market, uh, for your skilled, for your skilled labor, fire, planning and inspections. By the way, parks and recreation finance, this is, this shows that we had five separations each for those departments. So that's why, why I indicated these. And then you see, uh, fewer separations in these departments the last two quarters. Retirements this year in PD, leading the way, uh, we had six retirements. We had four non-sworn employees retire, two sworn, and then it kind of dropped off from there and we see the, the breakdown in the retirements by departments this year. Fifteen, which again, in the past couple of years, a little bit higher. Like to look at this information, this is last year, this same time last year, so June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, we had thirty-eight separation. What I like about this slide is, is it shows that if we can get employees past maybe that third year, we have a greater likelihood of keeping them. So things such as maybe, uh, enhancements to benefits, uh, pay, uh, if we can get, uh, maybe focus some of that, uh, on this group of employees, then it's likely that we'll keep them and we maybe can reduce that turnover, uh, even more. So this is in comparison, again, June twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-four this, this time of year. And again, you can see it's this group here where we tend to have the most turnover, those with the less than three years of service. One of the things that stood out this year that I kind of, kind of wanted to take a look at is you see we had a number of employees turnover with ten years of service or greater, uh, compared to last year. So we looked at that and we, and this is what showed, this is what it showed us as far as employees with ten years of service, certainly their individuals that have greater tenure, they've been with us for a while, why is it that they're leaving? Had a couple leave for personal reasons. We did have two that, uh, went to another city, had two that actually changed careers. We had a couple of performance issues and then we had one employee unfortunately passed away, uh, in this category. So we do look at turnover, not necessarily at an aggregate level throughout the city, but we're always looking at turnover even at the department level and working with the departments to see how we can improve the turnover rates. One of the things that Paulette has men, has mentioned at the beginning of her presentation is, uh, some of the money that we've allotted as far as targeting pay to specific positions, that's to address this, this, this turnover, uh, rate is to look at some of those positions where we're having the higher turnover and see if we can do something to incentivize employees to stay. On the flip side, are we able to, when we have turnover, are we able to recruit, uh, qualified, uh, good employees? And the discussion, the comment, I think the question was asked at the goal session was, you know, are we, do we see ourselves as a, as a, as an employer that people want to come work for? And I, my comment was yes, I, I do, and I think we've had that for a number of years. Um, so I wanted to just show, we did have a number of key positions to fill this year and you can see, you know, I kind of like the, uh, the breakdown of this. We were able to fill a lot of our key positions through promotions, so we've had a really good bench as far as, uh, those individuals that, that they're able to fill key positions within the organization, but also, uh, we've been able to attract really good quality, qualified employees from the outside and bring someone in from the outside. And then also, very important, uh, is our ability to recruit police officers. You can see last year, it was, uh, we were a little bit of a challenge for us and other, other municipal employers, but this year we've been able to hire so far through this year, uh, fourteen and fourteen police officers. So this slide shows the vacancies that are currently posted this year compared to last year to kind of see again where are we at, uh, what's happened over the last year. So these aren't all the vacancies that we have right now, but these are the vacancies that were vacant last year and this year. So you can see we still have some challenges in the maintenance, public works positions. We've got currently seven vacancies. Police officer, we're about the same due to attrition and the turnover that we've seen. We've been able to make ground by hiring police officers, but as far as the vacancies, we've not really been able to, uh, break a whole lot of, uh, see a lot of movement there, but we do anticipate that that's going to change. Uh, and then detention officer, we have, Chief Young and I have been talking about some things regarding detention officers, things that we might can do to attract, uh, or to fill these vacancies on, uh, with our detention officers. So before I start talking about the pay plans and our recommendations, does anybody have any questions just, uh, in general about the information that I just shared?
Uh, Patrick, the number of people that left with less than a year experience, would that, um, be showing the openings in the maintenance workers, uh, primarily in that particular area?
It, it, it could be, yes, yeah. We do see a lot of turnover because in those types of positions, they're, they're, they tend to move from employer to employer where there's an increase in pay. So yes, that would be reflected in those, in individuals that left after, or before the first year.
All right, thank you. It could also be people who didn't quite make it through their probationary period. We have a, a one-year probationary period here, so if they weren't living up to expectations, then there are some of those that we would have let go.
Yes, thank you, Paulette, that is included as well.
Really quick, the eight in the police section that were still hiring, you said we hired fourteen, because they're going through-
Yes, there are some various stage of the employment process, could be in training right now, could be in the FTO program.
And is that eight part of that fourteen that's open, or are they still looking for additional eight bodies?
No, they're still looking for additional eight bodies.
Officers or officers in like office?
No, officer, that's police officers only.
Police officers only.
Yes, sworn officers only.
Okay, thank you.
So do you have, um, I mean, we shut our turnover fifteen percent. Do you have industry average and then do you have geographic industry average?
Well, Bureau of Labor Statistics is kind of where we've gone to in the past and they categorize, they don't, they, they look at it, it's government overall as opposed to municipal and, and it's historically, that's run around eighteen to nineteen percent. Uh, but I can provide you with the BLS statistics on, on there.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Turnover is good, meaning it's not a bad thing.
Okay, so I want to start talking about, uh, pay plans, our recommendations. So we have two types of pay plans with the city. We have, our general government employees are in what's called open ranges and I'm gonna, I'm gonna describe all these and get in great detail, uh, here in just a few minutes. And then our public safety employees or sworn public safety employees are on, in, in what's called a step pay plan. So each year we do a survey and we survey both our sworn public safety, uh, uh, positions as well as we, we, we survey our general services positions, which we survey, which we, we call them our benchmark positions. These are the seventeen cities that we, uh, compare our, our salary information with. Um, these cities were chosen, uh, by a group of, of managed city management team as well as employee associations, I think it was about two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. And we looked at a number of different cities throughout the metroplex and, and tried to decide which ones do we think are gonna be, are going to be the best market comparison for us, some of the things that we considered, geographic location, uh, scope of services. What I mean by scope of services is, some cities, for example, they do, they could, they, they have employees who do their own sanitation, uh, pickup. Uh, we don't. Um, on the public safety side, uh, some cities, their firefighters only fight fires, they're not paramedics. So that's what I mean by scope of services. You're looking for the best match possible, population size, budget size, and also what I would call direct competitors, maybe some cities in the region that we have lost employees to. So this was a process, uh, these, we chose these cities based on, uh, a, a process with the city manager's office and the employee associations. So the general government pay, pay plan, uh, our survey results showed that the ranges moved, that other cities moved their ranges two percent and the average salary increase was three percent. So on the general services side, what was approved in last year's budget, which was we moved ranges for our general services, uh, employees two percent in October and we provided employees with a three percent merit increase, uh, at the maximum of the pay grade. So we were pretty much in line last year with, uh, what the general services, what the survey results showed. So one of the things I, I, one of the recommendations that we are making is, you may recall last year, uh, during the budget process, we had proposed a three and a half percent, uh, merit increase for the general services side and due to funding, uh, we reduced that by a half percent and went to three percent. So one of the things that we are recommending is that this year we do have funds available that we could provide the general services employees with a half a percent lump sum payment. So it's not in addition to, it's not in addition to their salary, but just a lump sum payment, which would be, uh, provided to them at the last paycheck in August of this year. So that is a recommendation for this fiscal year is to provide that to those general services employees. I've listed the cost of that here, the roughly a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For next year, our recommendation is to, uh, provide a two percent range adjustment, which would be effective October for our general services employees, as well as a four percent merit increase for that group of employees, again, all in October. Uh, right now, the, the departments are performing their evaluations for their employees, for all the employees on the general services side, they're due to the HR department in September. We'll take them and we will, uh, then, uh, process, uh, whatever's approved in the budget as far as increases October one. Everybody, all general services employees are on the same review date. One of the things I do want to point out is that, um, you have to be eligible to get a merit increase, so you have to have at least a meet standard performance evaluation. Uh, typically, if an employee does not have a meet standard, that employee will be put on a performance improvement plan, uh, and then they will, uh, have to, uh, reach an acceptable level of performance for a period of time, typically three to six months, depending on the situation. If they successfully complete the performance improvement plan, then they would be eligible for the four percent merit increase. So this is not, uh, terms that you might hear like a cost of living adjustment where it's just applied across the board, uh, with no relation to employee performance. Ours are all based on making sure employees perform satisfactorily.
Question?
Yes, sir.
When I think merit, like you've earned something, and so why is it just meeting standards that gets you additional money when you're being paid for services? So if I'm paying you, then I expect you to meet a standard and a merit to me means you're exceeding a standard. So how, how, why do we decide it that way?
Yeah, well, that's been the city system since, since I've been here, is that to achieve, uh, your, your merit increase, that we're looking for acceptable performance. It doesn't mean that there's not room for improvement, uh, but that's, that's the expectation is to at least meet accept exceptional performance. I know there are some employers that provide additional incentive, maybe if they're in an outstanding category as opposed to a meets expectation category, but historically, we have always provided employees that, that have at least met standards with their merit increase.
And, and I know, Paulette, you mentioned that we're looking at potential ways to incentivize, what, what word would we use, efficiencies, but like, I'm, I'm talking about how do we incentivize people to go above and beyond in their job, like to be excellent in their job? And so I just, you know, if we're giving merit increases to everybody who's just, yeah, you did okay in your job, I just, but then we're not doing it for people who excel in their job. That, that's what I want to differentiate.
Yes, again, that, that, I know that is, that, that is a, a way that a lot of employers incentivize, if they're, if they're getting a higher rating on their performance evaluation, then they're going to be able to achieve a greater, uh, merit increase, a greater increase. Um, that's something we can look at. Uh, I think there are some other incentives, I think that some other incentives that we're gonna look at that is gonna address kind of what you're wanting to do. Uh, but our system has been, and I, you know, some of it probably has to do with the civil service system just in general and over the years, you know, pull it with, with police and fire, basically it's a tenure-based system, so if you're here another year, you're gonna get an increase. So there's probably some of that that has kind of held us back and held public employers back as well.
So, yeah, a lot of history of that relates to, recall it, before we did the charter changes, most of our general, most of our employees were in the civil service system. So that limited our ability to do things differently for different performance levels. However, in the past, way before when I was here the first time and also in other cities I've worked in, there's been different levels of increases based on whether your, whether your meets exceeds are outstanding. And then in terms of, um, extra incentive for performance, so government agencies can't do things like the private sector in terms of a bonus, so there's that, just because it's difficult to measure, you know, the private sector, it's, it's a lot profit, sales, quota driven, we can't do that, we're specifically prohibited from doing that, but, uh, so there's other ways, but there are other ways to look at it. But just know that, um, not everyone gets a make meets expectations, uh, performance evaluation and those performance improvement plans are utilized frequently.
I will say this, the, so Jack Welch's book, Jack, um, he, he talks about, I don't know if you've ever read that one, but he, he, the HR section is actually really, um, he says HR is the most important, uh, department in the company, just so you know.
Thanks. I don't feel that way sometimes, but-
Uh, yeah. And he uses a system that rewarding the top ten percent and then the middle seventy is just kind of cost of living, kept up to grade, and then the bottom twenty is basically you get rid of them. Um, and that, and it runs on a cycle annually. Um, United Healthcare did it a little different, it was the top twenty percent and then it was the seventy and then it was the ten that we got rid of every year. Um, and you're kind of forced, almost into a forced ranking and you cull the bottom out every year. Um, and the part that makes that difficult is, is if you ran a, a lean division, uh, you frequently let go of people that were actually pretty decent and you replace them in the recruiting process with someone not great. Um, and you, and that didn't always work. Um, I think that speaks to more of what you're talking about, it's saying, we're gonna, we, we're on the side of, of doing extra for those that are doing really good versus just the, the masters that kind of go, well, I just pulled my weight, so. I, I love the idea of tiered merit, if we can do that. I think that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Sure.
You know, three different levels, four percent, three percent, two percent, whatever.
Really quick to simplify this for when someone's watching this later on. We, are we not allowed to give incentives to employees that are going above and beyond? Or do we have to just do it like this, okay, just, we call it merit, but we have to do it like, this is how you get a pay increase?
No, we can do what Councilmember Vaughn has suggested. We could set up a, 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 a performance system, a reward system based on achieving a certain level of performance and provide different forms of merit increases for that. We could do that. That's different than a bonus or an incentive that maybe is paid out for, we have to be careful and I think the city attorney's office is looking at situations where we can do that to where we're not running afoul of the law.
Now, what do you call the lump sum payment?
Well, the lump sum payment is going to be for performance and still performance based.
Still performance based, okay. So we can just, because I understand where Councilman Vaughn is going with this. So we don't, we can just have tiered system of-
We can do that.
If you're doing fantastic, you're, you're earning it compared to everybody and their brother gets this lumping free.
Correct, we can do that.
It is possible, is what I'm getting at.
Yes, yes, sir, it is.
Okay, thank you.
This is a gift of public funds, is it right?
Yes, sir, it is. Okay, all right, so I want to talk a little bit about, uh, the general services pay plan structure and kind of go over the differences between what a merit increase, purpose for merit increase and then also, uh, the, the range adjustment. So this is what a general services pay plan, this, these are just some positions in our plan. We have positions set up in pay grades, we have a minimum, which is entry level salary and then we have a maximum and employees can progress. They can start out anywhere at the minimum or above and they progress their way, uh, to the maximum of the pay plan. So as an example, let's say we hire a secretary, secretary's at the pay grade of nine thirteen. Here you can see the, uh, pay grade, the minimum to the maximum. Uh, salary is of September thirtieth, uh, she's, this individual's somewhere between, uh, or within the range of thirty-eight thousand four hundred. Uh, we provide, or if approved, the, the, the four percent increase, a merit increase of actual salary, her new salary would be thirty-nine nine three six as of October. Next year, when we're looking at, uh, perhaps, uh, increase or funding another merit increase, I just chose four percent of the actual salary, her increase would go from thirty-nine nine three six to forty, forty-one five three three. So you can see, and the reason why this is important is because we have step plans too. So I'm gonna show you what a step plan looks like in just a minute. But individuals in this, uh, open range system can, can go anywhere at any percentages within- this minimum and maximum.
Patrick, I think a number got left off of your mid there. What's the, you know, what that last number is?
Oh, you're going to make me do math, sorry.
It's okay, it's fine. We'll just assume it's 44,200.
Okay. So that's how an open range works as far as the merit system. So as far as a pay range adjustment, which is what we do and, and other employers do to make sure that our ranges are competitive, is we have what we call benchmark positions. These are 48 positions that are in our pay plan. In our pay plan, combined between the general services and public safety, we have about 140 different individual positions. So these are positions that are common throughout the city. So we know that we have a good match, an accountant at the city of North Richardson Hills is similar to an accountant at another city. The comparisons that we look at on the general services side is based on the midpoints. So other employers, municipal employers, the 17 cities that, that we compare ourselves with, they have minimums and they have maximums. So when we're looking at what, what the range adjustment has been from one year to the next, we're comparing the midpoints. So we're taking the midpoint between the minimum and the maximum, and we're looking at these positions each year, and what did the midpoint do the next year? And the survey showed that this midpoint moved two percent. So that's why we're recommending a two percent range adjustment. So what that looks like using the example of the secretary again, is we have the, this individual within the range of the 39,936. Here's the minimum and the maximum, and we do a two percent range adjustment. You can see where the salary is going to stay the same, but the minimum and the maximum moves. So they're not moving, pay range adjustments with an open range doesn't necessarily move an individual's salary who's within that range, with the exception of, with one exception, if there's somebody at the minimum, then they're going to move up to two percent because they're always going to be within the range. So that's the difference between the merit and the pay range adjustment. Any questions on the open range, general services, because I'm about to talk about public safety, small public safety? Okay. All right, so just a reminder of what, as far as compensation increases were this year for our sworn public safety, these are our sworn police officers and firefighters in the police. On October this year, we moved their range this three percent. On April, the police officer rank, their structure changed, and I'm going to cover that. And then all other ranks, April 1st, their, their, their range moved four percent. So I mentioned earlier that merit, merit increases and reviews for general services employees are done October 1. For the public safety, sworn public safety, their increases are April 1st. So it's not the same as general services employees. Sworn fire, same thing, three percent increase on October 1 for all ranks. We implemented the new rank structure for firefighter, April 1st, and then all other ranks at that time, and the fire department received a four percent increase. So this is what, this is an example of what that looked like. So last year, this is what our ranges were for the police officer, I'm using them as an example. Cadet recruitment, you can see these are steps, so employees can only move from one step to the next. There's not fruit movement between this minimum and this maximum. So I chose an employee, police officer of nine years of service, so last year at this time, this individual were done in step three. October 1, we did a fruit percentage range adjustment, so you can see the ranges moved. The pay moved, however, this employee did not move, did not receive their merit step, the merit increase until April. So in this case, the nine-year employee, what we did with the structure last year is we added two additional steps, as you might recall. So we, we called them tenure steps, because to achieve, to get to step five, you had to have eight to nine years of service. And then to get to step six, you had to have 10 years of service. So this individual of nine years of service, they went from step three. When we introduced the two new steps, since they had nine years of service, they went to step five. So this is what we've done, this is what we've done this year. One of the reasons for doing this, and you're going to see when I show survey information, is our comparisons on the public safety side are done at the maximums, not the midpoints of the pay ranges. And so we, we wanted to try to stay in line with the market on the maximums. So this slide shows what the pay ranges have done, and how the increases to the pay ranges have historically looked on the police and fire side. So where this really became an important analysis was just this last year. You can see that these are the maximums for police officers, I'm looking at police officers with this chart. These, this is the average maximum of the police officer, 17 cities that we compare with, and you can see from year to year, going back to 2017, typically their ranges adjusted about three percent. Here's the code, we didn't adjust quite as much, we didn't see market movement quite as much. But this last year, the ranges adjusted about seven and a half percent for police officer. So it took a pretty good spike. This year, the survey information shows that we kind of get that closer to the average, but the ranges moved four percent. So on the fire side, you see roughly the same trend line, but the ranges moved last year, not seven and a half percent, to seven percent, so just not quite as much as police officers did. Again, as we had mentioned, the police officer recruitment with cities was, was, was rather challenging last year, so that makes sense, and maybe they moved up a little bit more. But on the firefighter side, the ranges adjusted four percent, just like police this year. So the salary survey that we did in June of our sworn police and fire, these are the results. So you can see police officer at the maximum of the, of the pay plans were a little bit ahead of the market, market average, I should say. And then the ranks above police officer were a little bit, little bit lower than firefighter, we can see a little bit behind, you can see how much we're behind right now as of this last survey 2024 with the other ranks. So this slide shows, at this time last year, when I was presenting to council, as far as where we were in comparison to the markets, and you can see the 2023 survey results, police officer, we had some, some opportunities to make some changes this time last year compared to this year. So we're still maybe a little bit slightly behind with the majority of the ranks, but we did make that ground based on the addition of the two steps, step five and step six, which is what we did last year. So this is a slide that is important because this is, this yellow box represents the market average that the city has maintained, or attempted to maintain for, for quite a while. This is where council has kind of wanted us to stay within, since we have 17 cities, this is the range where they want us to stay. These cities, as you can see, are what I would say maybe, in, in, in our market comparison, a little bit behind the market. These are the cities that are probably, you know, are, are leaders of the market, but this is the range that we've attempted to keep our police and fire positions within. There have been a couple of occasions where I made the presentation that we were falling, we were falling slightly outside of this market average, and we had to do some, maybe additional adjustments to get us back within this market average. So you can see the low end, the police officer maximums of the pay plan, and then the high end, which is the city of Richardson. And you'll notice these percentages down here, so what these percentages or percentages reflect is what that city did as far as adjusting their ranges this last year. So you can see when we added the, the steps five and six for police officers, we actually adjusted their maximums by 11%. Some cities, Cedar Hill did not adjust their ranges, Bedford 10%, Great Mount Forest. So that's what those percentages reflect is what the movement for that particular city did from one year to the next, for last year to this year. So this is police officer. Firefighter, again, you can see we are within this market average, within this range, and you can see where the other cities are at. Historically, you're going to find, you know, police officer firefighter, the cities are going to be within, you're not going to see a city that has their police officer pay maybe down here and their firefighter pay up here. They're all going to be pretty much in line with the police and fire. So what are we recommending this year based on the survey information? So I've listed over here with the survey results, reminded what the survey results showed. We're proposing, the council approved in October, a four percent range adjustment to all the ranges. So there's no step movement, we're just going to take the steps and take the ranges, and we're going to move them four percent. And then April 1st, we're proposing for police officer, we're gonna, we're not going to eliminate those top five steps, five and six, but we're going to take that tenure requirement away, and we're just going to, we're going to make them just annual steps. So we're going to take that tenure requirement, and I'm going to show you what this looks like in just a second. And those employees will get a step increase. Police sergeant, police lieutenant, in, 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 in April 1st, they'll just get a step increase. So firefighter, we're going to propose a new structure, and I'm going to show you what that looks like in just a second. We are going to eliminate the tenure steps, again, step five and six for them as well, just like we're doing for police officer. Those that aren't affected by steps five and six, they're going to get a step increase in April. Driver engineer, we are proposing a new structure for them. Currently, right now, the driver engineer position has two steps. So what we're proposing is we're just adding a third step to the driver engineer to just allow a little bit, for a little bit more salary growth for our driver engineers. And then in April, fire captain and vitality chief, we're just proposing step increases for them. So what does this look like? Let's take a look at, using the example of nine-year police officer. So September, this year, this is where this individual would be in the pay plan, and they're going to be step five. October 1, we're going to do a four percent range adjustment. So this individual will not move steps, but you'll see the pay will increase. And also, I would note, when we do a four percent range adjustment, you're going to see that our police officer step six is going to go to over $100,000. And then April, we're going to implement the new structure, which I mean by that is we're basically taking these tenure requirements out. So this individual, this nine-year police officer, because he's been here nine years, he's going to go to the top of the step, to step six. Does that make, does that make sense?
What makes him go to step six?
Because he has an access of six years, we're basically looking at the six years, this employee had been here for six years, this is where they're going to be, so.
So they can make $100,000 for being here six years instead of 10 years now?
Correct, yes. Assuming that there's not any court performance evaluations in there, and they're not getting a step increase from one year to the next.
One of the things when we started talking about public safety compensation early in the budget process, that they articulated was important to them was, was that top out amount being over $100,000, and that you could get there in, in, in six years or a reasonable time. The reason that is, is our, our comparison cities, and I think, did you show this already? You mentioned that their, their, their top out is over $100,000, and they get there within six to seven years. And so we're trying to compete for those folks against, you know, those comparison cities that we have. So, so that's kind of why this ends up like that. At the same time, we're also trying to make sure that our more experienced folks don't get poached, which is not just an issue now on the public safety side, but it is also an issue in, in the general government side. We can get into that later. But that, that's why you're seeing that, like that way.
And what happens when they say they're, okay, after six years in, then where does their growth go after that? It's through the.
Through the rank adjustments, yes. And that's kind of the goal, right now, you know, public safety, years ago, the goal was to always provide for, so you can see step plans, you'd see 20, you'd see cities with 20 step plans, 15 step plans. Over time, it's kind of changed, and the goal is to get to the top in as quick as you can.
Also, you know, even, some of these officers will promote through the ranks, so they'll be at a higher pay, so.
I'll just say the school district has 35 every year, 35, one, two, 35. And that's 35 against, I don't know, but that's how they adjust that schedule, is they did the same thing, but they, but every year or so isn't it just?
Yeah, and, and, you know, some cities, it's going to, similar to on the open ranges, you know, the distance between the minimum and the maximum, some cities, their distances are different. It could be 15% from the minimum to the maximum. Same thing with police and fire, you do see some cities with four steps as opposed to six, you see some with 10 steps, so it's not, it's, it's not every city has the same number of steps. Yes, sir.
I know we're talking about police and fire now, but is there any sort of merit or performance incentive built in on that? I don't know what it would be in that type of category, but does any of that apply at all, or can?
When you're, when you're, when you're talking about pay, no, there's no performance incentive on the pay side. I, I don't know if there's as far as assignments or things like that.
On the civil service side, and they're either all sworn or civil service, and you can't, you can't do it that way, because it become, you can't define clearly like what makes, what is, why, and you can't have quotas for citations, for example, but you can't define clearly like this person, what is outstanding performance compared to the other police officer?
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, and I'm not, I have no clue about actual performance of anyone, right? But theoretically, what stops a person who's, I've been on the job for eight years, I sit around at my desk, I don't really do much work, you know, if they make me do something fine, versus someone who's maybe four years in, that's like, I want to go get it, I want to learn new assignments, I want to do all of this stuff. How do you compensate for that? How do you recognize that?
Well, again, on the pay side, there's nothing that we do to the civil service system. Now, as far as perhaps assignments and promotions, how that goes into performance evaluations and decisions for future promotions, you know, I, I have to defer to the chiefs to see if there's something that they do on the performance side, but as, as far as pay, there's, there's no incentive on the pay side.
I'll just, go ahead.
I, I can assure you that, you know, if we have somebody that sits around the desk and waiting for us to tell them something to do, we will give them something to do. You know, we have a pretty highly motivated department as a whole. Yes, you do have officers that have been there, you've been there a long time, and they're, they're starting to age out. But at the end of the day, there is a pretty high expectation for court performance at, at all levels of the department. And I could go into a deeper discussion about previous times where we have done, you know, you know, based on your performance measure, I can tell you when I was a, a young officer, we had that happen at our department, and the chief automatically came out and said to all the staff, okay, everybody is a five, because I want, I want everybody to get the raise that they're supposed to get. So you would, you would have quite a culture change for the organization to do something like that, because you will have one supervisor that will grade very hard, you'll have one that will grade very easy, and you would have a lot, you would have a lot of transition to try to transition to something like that for, for a police department, for sure.
So if there is any police officer, whatever, any officer, that's just not as motivated as other people? The answer is, well, we're not going to go on promotions, obviously, but two, there's potentially some performance management that can happen?
Yes, we will have, we, we have put employees on PIP for our performance improvement plan as a result of, of what we perceive to be substandard where we're not carrying out the duties that they have agreed to do for our taxpayers.
One thing I would add to that would be, we do have members of the department that still not automatically get their step. They may be eligible for the next step, but because of performance evaluation, they're not eligible, what Patrick alluded to before, that's not that uncommon for us, if they're not meeting expectations, that's, that would be the penalty for them if they wouldn't move to the next step until that performance is up to that level.
Got it, I missed that part, sir.
So I think this new structure sounds great, Patrick, and they've gone, had a very thoughtful thing, it's going to solve two things, you have, for recruiting, it sounds like it's going to help with recruiting, and then also retention for that mid-level, you know, experienced person, it's likely to be chomping shifts, so it makes a lot of sense to me.
So you could be two, three years behind the sixth step. It, it could take you nine years to get to the sixth year level, based on what you were saying. Okay. Right. Okay.
Okay, so I did want to show fire, one, one difference on fire. Here's the example of firefighter, nine-year firefighter, again, in September, this is where this individual would be. We do the four percent range adjustment, no change in step. However, there would be an increase in pay, you see what the top out would do, and in step five, or, or, April 1st, this individual with nine years of service would go to step six. So I'm going to really kind of get into detail here, the weeds, but I'm going to show you what. what this looks like when we do a market comparison. One of the other things that we're doing with firefighter pay plan only is we're taking the distance between step three and step four, step four and step five, and step five and step six, which is currently 2%, we're moving it to 3%. When we do, when I show you the chart and market comparisons, you'll see why. So that is one distinction. That's why you're seeing the maximum in October compared to April increase, where you didn't see that in the police departments, because we are increasing in April the distance between these top-end steps. So when I show you the comparison here, this is where we would anticipate where we're going to be within the market when the cities, this is a police officer, when cities adjust their ranges, and I'm assuming a 3% range adjustment, if you remember the slide I showed earlier, average is around 3% or 4%. So when we make our adjustments, and we're assuming that the cities adjust their police ranges next year 3%, you'll see where we will fall in comparison to the other cities. So we're going to still be within that market average, but we're going to be on the top end of the market average. And then when you do the same comparison with the market for fire, you can see by increasing those top-end steps from 2% to 3%, you're going to see that they're going to be at a very similar position within the market average after April of next year. Again, this assumes all the other cities move 3%. Some cities may move 4, some may move 1, some may move 2. So does that make sense? That, that shows, I think we're still maintaining the, the position that the council is wanting to, to maintain and then kind of be at the higher end on top of that.
Patrick, if you could go back to slides to the fire, just out of curiosity, what's the cadet? Is the chief's the cadet, is that from initial hire to that one year until you get pinned? Or what's that?
Yeah, definitely on the fire side are people that we're hiring that aren't dual certified, meaning they're not a firefighter or a paramedic. So they can be a paramedic only, and then we send to fire school, or they can be a firefighter EMT. So that's the category they go into until they become a, a paramedic. They'll stay at that for a year, they finish their basic training. If they haven't gotten the second certification, they would, once they get the second certification, they go to the first staff of firefighter. If they haven't gotten it, they go to the recruit. So firefighter EMT, as far as this, they can go is to recruit. They'll stay there until they become a paramedic.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so, whoops. So I've talked a little bit about pay ranges. I do want to show, these are actual salaries, these are discharge, that show the actual salaries of our sworn versus non-s sworn employees. So this is a look at kind of actual pay and where that falls out. So this side, this chart, high charts, you have the sworn employees. Roughly 9% of our employees earn a salary between $60,000 to $80,000, $79,000. 67% of our sworn police and fire earn anywhere from $80,000 to $99,000, and we have 24% of our sworn police and fire earn over $100,000. Then you can see our sworn employees, kind of where they fall out as far as pay. 15% of our employees earn below $40,000, 23, 40, 49. 46% earning anywhere from $50,000 to $79,000, and we have 16% that earn $80,000 plus. So you can see kind of the comparison between our sworn employees and then our non-s sworn employees' actual pay. Any other questions about, hey, I've got some slides on health insurance and recommendations? So let's talk about this year, what we, what was approved. So what was approved for this year is we actually reduced employee monthly premiums by $90, effective October of last year. You're going to see in just a few minutes, we've had just a number of years of very good performance with our self-insurance fund. And then January, beginning of our plan year, we did not make any plan design changes with the exception of one enhancement, is we increased the dental and orthobache cap from $1,500 to So I'm just kind of, I like looking at this information and pointing out, because we have a relatively new plan, a health savings account, which was suggested by some employees, we did introduce that. Prior to the introduction of the HSA, you can see our two plans, the HRA, traditional plan, percentage of employees that participate in each one, which you can see over the last couple of years, as we've had the HSA for two years, we've seen some growth in the HSA participants, which I, 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 which is really exciting. It's a great plan, the health savings account. There is contribution for anyone who participates, the city does contribute $600 to their HSA account. See, you see for the most part, people that were in the HRA are kind of migrating over to the HSA. So I thought that was a good recommendation by employees. Glad council approved this to, to implement that plan. So this slide shows a, a history of where our actual expenses have been compared to what we have budgeted each year for our health, medical, and prescription. This goes back to, all the way to 2009. So black line is where our plan actually performed, where our claims cost actually came in at compared to where we budgeted. So a couple of things I would just point out here, is you can see, for the most part, if you were to go back prior to this, it's going to be cyclical. You're going to see times in which we were over budget, times when we were under. But you can see here, about 16, 17, we started to take a little bit of a dip. I would just point out that this was right before, or right after, we made changes to our retiree health plan. So we started to see kind of a reduction in that, in our claims cost because of the eligibility requirements that we went to for our, for our retiree health plan. And then you can see COVID hit, and so pretty much everything kind of shut down during COVID. You can see where our claims costs just have continued to remain low. Now that we have gotten kind of clear from COVID, you're starting to see where our actual costs are starting to go back up, that trend line's starting to kind of creep back up to where it was in the past. And you can see the adjustments that we've actually made in our budget over the year as far as cost to the city, the allocations to the departments, as well as employee premiums. So I would anticipate, you know, this trend line's probably going to continue to inch up, but that's the explanation for why we saw this, 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 this distance here.
In, in the city business, what you adopted for a budget, that's per person, so your employees didn't change much, well, that wasn't part of the gap. Does all that money still go into the reserves for the insurance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It doesn't do much. So one of the things that has impacted our plan over the years is, is we define as large claims. We define large claims as anything over $25,000. You can see relatively since, since we've, since we've started to kind of see our claims cost start to just inch up after we changed the eligibility from the, for our retiree health plan, one of the things that, that's important about that, and I know there's, it, it goes a little bit back in history, but when we made that change to the retiree health plan, prior to making that change, we had about 154 retirees on the plan, and then now we have around 80. So we, 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 we increased the eligibility requirement, so that's why that's important, because you're, you know, you, we've, we've had fewer people on the plan since then. And you can see right before, not making any judgments, but right before we changed the eligibility, you can see what our large claim losses were at the time, almost $6 million. And the year prior to this was $5.7 million. You see, since that time, we've, what we define as large claim losses is, is kind of normalized. Question?
So this is health insurance for people that no longer work for the city?
No, this is health insurance for people that work for the city, as well as their dependents.
What was the retiree part, you said?
Yeah, so prior to, so we do have pre-65 retirees on our health plan. They are eligible. Retirees that hit 65, they then have to move into Medicare Advantage or Supplemental Plan, which is fully funded by their premiums. So this is going to show all employees, participants, or their dependents, and pre-65 retirees and their dependents. That's what this shows.
So if a person was 20 when they started working for the city, they retired at 40 or 50, even though they don't work for the city anymore, they still get 15 years of health insurance?
Well, that was the plan before we made the change back in 2017 and 18. Now there's a minimum age to retire with the city and be eligible for our health insurance. A minimum age is 55. Yes, prior to that, you could work 20 years for the city, start at 20, retire when you're 40, and continue your health insurance until you're 10 years now.
55 to 65?
Correct, that's correct.
Also, the retirees pay higher premiums, depending on where they qualify, so when they retire. We do it similar to how schools do it, where there's a, there's a number rule you're hitting based on your age and years of experience, and then there's different tiers of premiums you can pay based on where you worked when you retired. But they, in all, I think in all cases, they are higher than what employees pay.
That, that, that's correct. So we have, we went to the rule of 90, which is similar to what the school district, rule of 90, rule of 85, rule of 80, so it's a combination of years of service and age. So you have to hit the rule of 90 with, you know, the, the contribution the city makes for those employees that hit the rule of 90 is a little bit higher than those who hit the rule of 85, rule of 80, so it's very, it was kind of structured that way, what the school district has. But you have to have a minimum age of 55 to begin with. So health insurance, so we, we have had good claims years. We, we anticipate this year finishing slot ban for budget as the chart showed. One of the things that we're proposing is that since we are going to be finishing under budget and due to the healthy reserves, we would propose a premium holiday. So in September of this year, we propose that we do not deduct employee health or dental insurance premiums from their paychecks, since we're going to be coming in under budget, anticipation that we're coming under budget. And lots of revenue would be roughly $115,000, so we would propose that, that premium holiday in September. Next year going forward, no increase to the city allocation October 1st, we're going to hold the allocations the same and then no increase to employee premiums January 1st, or changes to our plan design such as increases in co-pays and pocket match and things like that. So that's our recommendation. And any, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know there was a lot of information and that section took a lot more than we anticipated, but I think it's good information, especially having new city council members to kind of understand our HR side and how we determine where we want to set pay and compensation, but also on health insurance side, being self-insured is kind of a different model than, than a lot of other cities use, and so I hope that has helped with y'all's understanding of how that all works.
And I would suggest self-insure as well, that just based on experience, you're large enough and it's, you have a lot more leeway as far as benefits and how you manage things and pay things.
All right. Good morning, mayor, members of the city council. Today I'll be discussing the general fund with a overview of the CCD fund and special revenues to follow later today. To start with, I want to direct your attention to pages 103 through 108 of your executive summary book, where you can find the fund summary of the general. One more time, that's page 103 through 108. In that fund summary, you will find actuals for the previous two fiscal years, the current adopted budget, the revised budget, that will be brought before council on August 12th, and the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. I'll begin my discussion this morning with a brief overview of the revised budget. Staff have reestimated revenues based on fiscal year-to-date data and a projection for the remaining two months, and a forecast that revenue in the general fund will come in 0.2% lower than adopted. This difference is comprised of a 3.9% shortfall in property tax collections, slightly lower sales tax collections, and other decreases. These decreases are offset partially by a 46.6% increase in licenses and permits, driven primarily by higher-than-anticipated building permit revenue. Expenses have also been revised downward by 0.2% because of the healthy fund balance and solid performance within the self-insurance fund, all funds, when personnel received a decrease in health insurance allocations this year, which for the general fund results in a savings of over $700,000. The revised budget also eliminates planned transfers to the sidewalk capital fund or sidewalk capital projects that can instead be funded for insurers within that capital fund. These savings include an increase in the contribution to the general fund's fund balance of approximately $135,000. Shifting gears towards the proposed budget for next fiscal year, this slide provides a breakdown of the sources of revenue that come into the general fund. Just over two-thirds of the revenue comes from sales and property tax, with the remainder made up of franchise fees, service charges, and other revenue sources. Throughout today's presentation, you will see some slides and figures described as part of the base budget versus others that are described as proposed additions to base. This distinction is intended to highlight the difference between continuing quote-unquote "normal" or standard operations, which inform the base budget, versus policy, program, or other changes that are highlighted for the city council's consideration as proposed additions to the base budget. All funds are presented with a balance of zero, meaning revenues and expenses are balanced after including all proposed additions to base budgets. Compared to the current year's adopted budget, revenue is budgeted 5.3% higher within the proposed budget. Revenue highlights include increased property tax revenue, a modest increase in sales tax driven primarily by anticipated new business openings, increases in license and permit fees, and a significant increase in anticipated interest income. Ambulance fees are also expected to generate generally 19% more revenue based on the increased use of services. Municipal court funds are expected to generate less revenue as the number of citations has continued to decline, while franchise fees are also expected to decrease slightly. Finally, the proposed budget eliminates a reimbursement from the fleet fund for fleet-related Just under 60% of the proposed base budget goes towards public safety expenditures, including the police and fire departments. Other city functions funded from the general fund include public works, neighborhood services, the library, and general government and administrative functions, including human resources, finance, and the city secretary's office, amongst others. Compared to the current year's adopted budget, expenditures are budgeted 1.6% higher within the proposed base budget. Expenditure highlights include staffing changes within the city manager's office and fire departments, that will be discussed on the following slide, movement of the dedicated prosecutor position from the legal department to municipal court, and elimination of a planned transfer to the MRH Center operations that has been replaced by an equivalent transfer with the park fund. The proposed budget also eliminates the planned contribution to the general fund's fund balance, increases transfers to capital funds in order to cash fund projects, and helps to rebuild the IT fund balance with a $141,000 transfer to that fund. As the city manager previously mentioned, inflation does impact the proposed budget, driving costs of over $900,000, excuse me, $90,000 higher within the general. These inflation-driven increases to expenditures include items ranging from maintenance of critical software programs, consumable medical supplies, lowering costs, and others. I'll now cover proposed additions to the base budget starting with revenues. All funds, including the general fund, that generate revenue from credit cards include a proposed revenue increase that is designed to offset the city's costs of paying credit card processing fees. Regarding the short-term rental program the city manager previously covered, the general fund would have both new revenue and expenses associated with that change. Finally, the proposed budget includes an increase to ambulance fees to bring the city more in line with the fees charged from surrounding communities. This increase is expected to bring in $460,000 in addition revenue. This increase is expected to bring in four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in additional revenue. Proposed additions to the base budget for expenditures included compensation increases for sworn fire, sworn police, and general government employees. Costs for the proposed Lean Sigma training for city staff were distributed across funds based on headcount, with the general fund absorbing approximately twenty thousand dollars of the total thirty-five thousand dollar cost. The general fund also includes funding for an efficiency audit of the permits process and the aforementioned creation of the short-term rental program. Finally, the general fund includes additional funding for a number of public safety-related positions, including fifty percent of the funding for the city's mental health coordinator, with the other fifty percent funded through CCD, an increased cash match requirement from the cop screen that provided the city with four new officer positions, and funding for one additional dispatcher position to assist with call volumes. I mentioned earlier staffing changes within the city manager's office and the fire department. The proposed budget eliminates an assistant city manager position that has been vacant for the past three years. The budget also optimizes the placement of the city's emergency management function within the city manager's office, relieving the fire department of oversight responsibility. This move will enhance the public-facing, cross-departmental nature of the emergency management coordinator. Finally, the proposed budget also moves the city's fleet maintenance team underneath the public works department umbrella, which is common amongst peer cities and will improve the efficiency of this team. Finally, the general fund does include a decision point for the city council regarding the future of legal services within the city organization. At the bottom of the general fund, fund summary, is the net savings amount, one-hundred-and-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars, that would result from eliminating the in-house city attorney and assistant city attorney positions and increasing the amount paid to outside council. In-house counsel has proven valuable to the city organization because of their tight integration with city operations that results in more time spent with contracts and agreements, strategic insight and counsel regarding day-to-day operations, and reduced payouts from legal claims compared to before the city brought these functions in-house. During the council discussion portion of the agenda later today, staff will request direction from the city council regarding whether to include this change in the proposed budget for next year. That concludes my presentation. Hopefully, we made up some time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey Chase, uh, good presentation. A couple of questions for you. On the credit card fee, is that going to be a flat fee, like two and a quarter, something like that? Has that been determined yet or is that still?
So, at this point, those specifics have not been determined. One of the challenges the city faces across our portfolio of services is a number of different credit card processors depending on the software, depending on the operation. So, we know where we want to go big picture, and those details will be something that we're going to need to work out.
Okay, ACH, I was going to say what's being there.
Yeah.
Thanks. Is the dispatcher position, is that a shared cost in any way?
Yes, that would be, that's part of our shared services costs. And so, our three other cities would share in that as well.
So, is that our portion? I think it was like forty thousand or ninety thousand?
I believe that's the entire cost because we get reimbursed through their shared services payment. Yeah, yeah, that's the whole cost.
Oh, and the short-term rental program, that, so that money flows into, is it, what is it, hospitality tax or whatever?
Yeah, so there's two, there's two things. One is the permits and fees in the general fund side. So, that's the twenty thousand. And then, and we're anticipating charging about two hundred, I think, per rental for each year, right? And then, the hot tax, yes, that's the hotel motel tax, and that has to live in the promotional time.
So, they basically will have to report annually what their revenues were or something? How does that, how do we collect on the hospitality tax?
Hot tax is remitted on a quarterly basis to our finance department.
Okay, so the state collects it, right?
Yes.
And then? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The city operates a total of four funds that are what we call internal service funds because they essentially receive all of their revenue from transfers from other, from other city funds. The first one we're going to cover is the fleet services fund. This is for the revised current fiscal year budget. One-point-four million dollars is included in the revised budget over the proposed. That is an increase in our appropriation of fund balance on the revenue side of the house. This is from items that we had on order at the end of last fiscal year, but the items weren't received, so the actual cash was not paid out. So, these purchase orders rolled over into the next year. We appropriate fund balance so that we can match the revenue to the expense. We also had an eighty-six thousand dollar increase in interest earnings based on cash on hand. And we also had about a hundred thousand dollars in increase in auction proceeds from the sale of replaced vehicles. As you all know, we have been experiencing a delay in vehicles that we have ordered for the last few years based on impacts from the global pandemic. We find ourselves finally catching up with that. So, we are able to auction vehicles when we've got new vehicles that have come in to replace them. On the expenditure side of the house, we have about one-point-four million dollar increase in public safety vehicles that were replaced during this year. Again, these are items that had just been delayed from what we were expecting based on when we placed orders. And we also have seen some increase in our costs for vehicle parts, tires, fuel, and maintenance supplies. We talked a little bit before when we did our media review on the financials that we certainly are seeing increases in a lot of the cost of maintaining city vehicles. We do propose this revised budget with an ending balance of zero. For the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-five, we do have a decrease of about three hundred thousand dollars in inter-fund transfers. Again, we've kind of talked about right sizing our allocations across internal service funds. And for fleet, that impact is about three hundred thousand dollars. We are anticipating to continue our sale of city property or auctions based on getting in new vehicles for the year. And we also have the utility fund that requested to receive a new vehicle for next year. And so, they're paying for that. And so, we do have an increase in transfer of about two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for that purchase. We anticipate experiencing about thirty thousand dollars increase in fuel expenses. Of course, this is our best guess based on what we know from our fuel supplier into the next year. We also, again, anticipate to see some inflationary costs to potentially occur next year as well as the cost of that utility vehicle for about three hundred thousand dollars. We are reducing some of our capital transfers out. Again, we look to level some of our debt payments to also simplify how we're tracking some of our financials. And we do have fewer capital projects that we're using capital funds to pay for in the next year. Before our requested additions to base, the ending balance is at one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. The proposed additions to base, and you're going to see many of these repeated throughout our funds. The first one is for the compensation increase for general service employees. The cost to the fleet services fund is about forty-two thousand dollars.
The portion of the Lean Six Sigma efficiency training that will go out citywide for this fund, the impact is about eight hundred, about eight hundred dollars. And we also are looking to conduct an efficiency audit for the fleet services division at an estimated cost of about a hundred thousand. So, once we factor in the proposed additions to the base, the fund is proposed balanced for next fiscal year. Our facilities fund for the current fiscal year anticipates to have about sixty thousand dollars in an increase of appropriation of fund balance. Again, this has to do with prior year expenditures that were not completed by the end of the year. We also are seeing a notable increase in our interest earnings of about forty-four thousand. For next year, I'm sorry, we also are seeing some expenditure increases for, in our building services division for natural gas and electricity costs. This is associated with that increase of appropriation from the previous year as well. We do a final rule and reconciliation of bills that are received in October for items that are actually having to do with September. And so, we see in natural gas and also in electricity that we tend to have these overlapping years. We are proposing the revised budget with an ending balance of zero. For next fiscal year, we are looking at an increase in revenues of about seven-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars as an appropriation of fund balance. And essentially, what this means is we are looking to use some of the existing fund reserves in order to pay for some of the items that we have going on for next fiscal year. So, rather than transferring money in from other funds, we're letting that fund's reserves to fund some of the projects. We also are anticipating about a twenty-five thousand dollar increase in interest earnings. And this is, the twenty-five budget is compared to the twenty-four adopted, not the twenty-four revised. So, we do adopt it versus the proposed. For expenditures, we do have some slight reductions that are scheduled for next fiscal year. One is in the area of the natural gas and building repair. Again, that has to do with some of the rollovers that happen at the end of the year and also increase in our transfers out to capital. We are looking to have a generator replacement project. We'll talk about a little bit later when we go through the capital projects. But this is something that the fleet services fund, I'm sorry, that the facilities fund would be paying for. And so, we'd be transferring that money out to fund this project. Prior to any additions to the base budget, the ending balance is two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. Additions to base as proposed include compensation increases for general fund services employees for the facilities fund. That amount total is right at ninety thousand dollars. Also, the fund share of Lean Six Sigma efficiency training as well as an elevator preventive maintenance program. This is something that we have not done proactively before. We recognize the need to do that because our facilities are continuing to age. We don't just need to call a repair person when something breaks. We need to be more proactive in doing repairs and also inspections of our elevators. After the proposed additions to base, the fund balance is at zero for this fund. For information technology, we have for the current year about sixty thousand dollars in other fund transfers for projects that are going on during the current year. And we also are utilizing about six-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in appropriation of fund balance. Again, this has to do with the beginning of the year rollover. So, as we've had software and other things on order that we are implementing, if they didn't complete by the end of the year, they roll over into the next year. We also have four-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of increases in public safety, software, and equipment, as well as vehicle technology. So, when we purchase vehicles, there is a significant amount of technology that goes into those new vehicles. We have to assess the vehicle-by-vehicle basis, what can move from one piece of equipment to the other and what really just has to be purchased. So, we have some purchases for animal services, for police patrol, and also for fire department trucks. As proposed, the revised budget would have an ending balance for the current period of zero. For next year's proposed budget, revenues are set to increase by almost a million dollars for transfers in or higher technology costs for the year, but also to have a decrease in the appropriation of fund balance. So, essentially, we would be bringing more money into the fund and using less of the fund reserves than what we have budgeted in the current year. And that's used to pay for maintenance costs that we have in next year, software that we're, that we now have to take on the annual maintenance costs for, as well as the increased cost of public safety specifically because of a new dispatch system that we're getting called Gateway. We also have new equipment for the officers that we are hiring into next year. So, we have to be able to flip all of those folks and any associated additional equipment that they have. Prior to any additions to base, the ending balance for this one is one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Again, the proposed additions to base, number one, are for the compensation increases, their portion of the Lean Six Sigma training, and also funding for efficiency audit within the IT department. After the proposed additions to base, the fund is balanced at zero. And finally, we have our self-insurance funds is how we pay for healthcare expenditures. The first thing is, what we have noted, and Patrick has spoken quite a bit to it, we have seen ourselves have a significant decrease in our claims experience. And so, rather than during this year, continue to have funds contribute to the self-insurance fund as they're budgeted, we're actually going to right-size the fund and send any over amount back to those corresponding funds. And so, that's why you see this reduction here in the revenues of one-point-two million. We're able to do that for some other reasons as well. The first thing is, we have seen a significant increase in interest earnings. So, because of the amount of cash we have on hand, we're able to earn much more in our interest than we initially anticipated. For the current year, that amount is five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand more than what was budgeted. We also receive a reimbursement from our stock loss insurance company. This is not something that we had budgeted going into the year, but because we have received a payment, we recognize that influx of cash, again, it leads to less funding that needs to go to the self-insurance fund. And finally, we also have seen an increase in pharmacy reimbursement from our insurance carrier. So, all of these revenue changes combined with our reduction in claims experience allows us to right-size the amount of transfers going into the fund. On the expenditure side of the house, we had some fairly slight increases, one for workers' compensation expenses, and we have a small increase in our contribution to fund balance. As proposed, the revised budget for the current fiscal year is balanced at zero. For next fiscal year, we are anticipating to also have a reduction in the total amount of funds that are being transferred from other funds into self-insurance fund, about one-point-two million dollars. We are anticipating to have an increase in other insurance from anticipated pharmacy reimbursements, also stock loss payments, and increases in interest income. So, essentially, what we're seeing this year, we anticipate to happen again in next year. We are anticipating a slight increase in our property liability and other insurance premiums. We are anticipating a slight increase in our health and medical claims, and that's really just a buffer in the event that we happen to have few things happen that we've not budgeted so tightly that we end up with any sort of concerns going forward. Prior to any proposed additions to base, the ending balance is at twenty-four thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. And again, this fund has a portion of the general fund services employee marketing increases as well as a portion of the Lean Six Sigma efficiency training for a total cost of twenty-four thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. And as proposed, this fund is balanced. I'm happy to take questions.
So, just a, Paulie, when you add, go back to the IT stuff, a license, when you say your software going into, you're going to Gateway and new equipment, there's a license associated with each vehicle, I assume, for how that it works, right? So, there's a new license. And that's all an additional cost? Was there not a savings for what the previous one was? Because that would imply there's additional new licenses above what we had before, and we're not getting rid of something, sorry?
It depends on what it is. And so, for Gateway in particular, that's a new software. So, there wasn't a net savings somewhere else to then offset with the increased cost. But when we have other software systems, they often are replacing something that's existing. We also are finding ourselves moving from less on-premise hosting to more on-cloud hosting. And often, that can create a price difference in what our annual costs are. And so, before we bring to city council or look to set our budget for consideration, we do offset any sort of cost savings with any cost additions. So, what we bring is the net difference.
Okay, so all the software that is, that's vendor-based maintenance, right? We don't have any in-house. Is all the hardware in-house maintenance? Do we handle a lot of hardware, technology maintenance?
So, on the hardware side?
Yeah.
Do you have services if we have?
Yeah, internally.
No.
No?
External service.
Oh, yeah, external service, okay.
Yeah, and it's connected to various.
Your cloud stuff, but not your desktop support stuff here, right?
We support the desktop.
Right, what do you do beyond desktop?
As in, like configurations?
Yeah, you don't have the DBA, right? Okay, so you don't have any of the software, all that?
No, no software development, everything's off-the-shelf, packages that we'll implement. And then, we support the backend infrastructure network. So, we have network engineer, cybersecurity. So we have a network engineer, we have a cybersecurity position.
Okay.
System admin and a typical help desk staff.
Okay. So so then your help desk staff is what communicates back to the vendor for any changes you want in the software or any implementations?
Yeah, that would go on through higher officials.
Okay.
Organization.
Okay.
On what the software is, I think we put some different applications.
Do you get charged for those services back from the vendor?
Depending on the vendor that we go to and where we're at with the implementation. The cloud, for example, right now, we're implementing environmental help during the configuration, basically, right now, so that's part of the implementation. Now, if we go back next year, as I really mentioned, you.
Do they, do they allow certain changes to be part of their deal and certain changes part of your deal, where you pay for some and they pay for some, or you pay for all?
We would pay for application, I believe, we have to make.
Okay.
We try to use everything that we can to ensure.
Sure.
It's essential.
Okay. Thanks.
Question? I see, you know, we're allocating an efficiency audit in several different places, and that's, that's good. I like that. I'm just curious, how are we, how did we prioritize where it's getting allocated? And then also, I mean, I think with with IT, as I said, IT project management, what are we talking about there when we say efficiency audit for IT project management? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, so I'll take that one. So there's a couple different things. One, development services. The reason that the departments were chosen, development services, one, is that we know we have a, we have room for process improvement, I'll just put it that way. We have an opportunity there with some staffing changes also to really implement some process improvement in terms of our fan review and permit review and those types of things. So there's that one. On the fleet side, it's primarily, again, it kind of relates back to project management overall and 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 all the departments that fleet serves now and making sure that our processes for considering new vehicles, vehicle replacements, vehicle additions and equipment plus the timing of repairs, maintenance for repairs, and the expense of that, doing it in-house versus contracting, those types of things, need to be looked at, and that's just bigger than we can kind of handle internal. And then when it comes to IT, so with IT, the reason that I wanted to choose that one as well is because our IT infrastructure has grown so much over the years, and we have failed to kind of adequately assess the staffing needs related to what our infrastructure is now. That's how I'll put it. And so in order to make sure that we're covering the things that the mayor was questioning about, all the different areas, hardware, software, maintenance, configuration, all these things, we want to make sure that our internal processes and staffing levels are set up to to do those things efficiently, if that makes sense.
Do you know if it's also going to identify potential opportunities for new software that could create efficiency? Does that make sense?
Well, yes, it it might. One of the things that we want to look at in that is is really understanding all of the software programs that we have and and their their full capabilities and how that might actually, I don't know.
Streamline.
Save us costs, streamline, or the save us costs and just continuing adding software, when actually we may have some software that already does what we're thinking. So two things there, yeah.
Well, and that same vein as far as cybersecurity, cybersecurity too, that we would have appropriate. So we're less risk, we're ransomware, all that kind of stuff.
So yes, we add cybersecurity positions the last year or two, two years ago, but also we do have cybersecurity insurance that is covered under the self insurance fund that will assist us should we face an attack. But yes, part of it would be to make sure that through those positions, through what we have in IT, that we are protecting ourselves as much as possible from that type of thing.
Thank you.
Look back for the six sigma. I'm not sure if I asked this before, but is there a particular level we're going to start at, or is it for like anybody from the bottom up could take, if they want to?
We want to start with the people who are leading departments. So we will do the yellow belt for all of our department directors. We also have an opportunity to look at a few other people. So there may be slots for some assistant directors to participate. When we move to the green belt, that next step, we'll look at taking a slightly smaller group, anyone through the green belt process, so that we have sufficient time to work on some sort of problem to demonstrate everyone has the concepts mastered. Because we want to time this prior to a submission of the next year's budget. We typically start those submissions in March. So we recognize also that we're doing this in addition to everyone's full-time job. And so we want to be realistic about setting the expectations for what we think we can implement within the first year in order to be impactful, that we don't just do training, that we use that information to to change decision-making into the next year.
Okay, so we're starting the director's level?
Yes.
Thank you. I think one on the IT side, and I think we talked about it in the strategic planning, I was talking to you guys, the the idea of more self-service for residents, you know, what software can we have to do that, possible apps that people could use to do, get a permit or something for that, where they don't have to commit to do those things. That I think that's a lot of what we're talking about, right?
Yes, so starting, I think, three years ago, we started the implementation of our new ERP program organization, which brought on a lot of those opportunities, especially on the permitting side. So I'm saying that because prior to that, we were way behind in terms of our online opportunities, our ERP system. And so we not only implemented the system, but we are also applying catch-up very quickly in those areas. So yes, I think is the answer to your question.
Quick question with IT. Sorry, we're picking on you. How many do you have on staff compared to, how many times do you go to a contractor to complete tasks?
So I have 15 on staff. So I'm going to a contractor, depending on what level we're looking for, I would use, we used to be solely relying on a external consulting firm for our network engineering and everything on the backend. We now use them just as a reference, so we're doing that in-house. We don't do any programming entirely. We go back to off-the-shelf software. So if that needs to be modified or anything, we have to hire out two of our, the alternative would be Tyler Technologies, which is our full ERP system. So those, but we have one other contractor that we use for some GIS services, but he would just use as an interim stock cap. We have staff on there, so we don't use him as much.
And so the 15, do they help with that, like everybody in the city? Like, is there something wrong with the, in the police department, they'll go over there and help? Somewhere in city hall, they can help?
So our staff is kind of separated. We have two areas, we have public safety and general services, or administration, what we're running our department into. But no matter what the issue it is, depending, levels different, the two positions for public safety are funded differently, but depending on the issue, we'll send our network engineer or our cybersecurity personnel over there and help us. We'll go over there to help them. Doesn't, there's no line that they have to go through. So just depending on the level of the service that they need or what they're asking for, what they're asking for help with, it'll get around to the problem person or personnel within my staff.
Okay, thank you.
Are we paying any money to crowd strike? The crowd strike?
What was the question?
Are we paying them any money?
Crowd strike?
Yeah.
That's why we got away. We had no issues. Now, some of our vendors that we use had issues, but internally, we didn't have any issues that day.
Good. Okay, so, no, maybe it's weird questions. I'm going to research, I'm going to research, I'm going to recess the city council budget work session at 11:35, and we're going to go into the crime control and prevention district board. And it is still, oh, it's 11:36. I mean, I'll call the crime control and prevention district board to order a quorum of the board is present, and the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act of the Texas Department Code, and let the record show the board member Mitchell is absent. Thanks. Now you got to wait.
Good morning, members of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board. I invite you to turn to pages 115 and 116 of your executive summary books as I discuss the budget for the CCD fund. Compared to the adopted budget, staff forecast that revenues for the CCD fund will come in 1% higher in the revised budget. Revenue highlights include increases in franchise taxes and interest income generated from the fund's fund balance. The revised budget also increases the appropriation of fund balance to fund projected increases in expenses that will be covered on the next slide. It is worth noting that the CCD funds, a primary source of revenue, sales tax is expected to finish in line with budget. Revised expenditures are also budgeted to increase by 1% above the adopted budget. Increased costs include firearm acquisition and additional acquired training for the community resources division, a prior year encumbrance to complete the remodel of the public training and safety center, and a prior year encumbrance for clothing and uniform purchases through the property evidence team. Uniform patrol is showing a net decrease because of reduced health allocation amounts that primarily impacts divisions with large numbers of personnel. For the CCD fund, the vast majority of funding comes from the dedicated half-cent sales tax approved by voters. Additional sources of revenue include reimbursements from BISB or the school resource officer program, interest income, and other smaller sources. Compared to the current fiscal year, proposed base revenue is budgeted 10.2% higher based on a modest 2.7% increase in sales tax, increased interest income generated from the fund's fund balance, and a modest appropriation of fund balance to fund budgeted expenditures. Increased revenue from the expansion of the SRO program is also shown in the base budget in order to clarify the net cost to the city when considering the addition of two school resource officers and three campus police officer positions in the proposed additions to base section of the fund summary. Proposed base expenditures for the CCD fund are primarily driven by four divisions of the police department, including patrol, community resources, detention slash technical services, and investigations. Proposed base expenditures are budgeted 0.9% lower than the adopted budget, driven primarily by a $400,000 reduction from one-time capital outlays that were budgeted in the 2023-24 fiscal year. Additionally, one position was moved from uniform patrol to the investigations division, causing expenditure adjustments within those two divisions. Acquisition of new crime mapping and analytic software, along with reductions in health allocations, make up the remaining difference. Before getting into the proposed additions to the base budget, it is worth mentioning the impact of inflation within the CCD fund, primarily driven by software and maintenance costs. The base expenditure budget is $20,850 higher for the CCD fund because of inflation-driven costs that could not otherwise be afforded. Finally, the CCD fund does include a number of proposed additions to the base budget, including compensation increases for both sworn police officers as well as non-sworn police department staff. As previously mentioned, the cost shown here for the two additional school resource officers as well as the three new campus police officer positions are net costs to the city after revenue reimbursements from BISB have already been accounted for. The budget also includes funding for one additional sergeant or patrol, funding for the victims assistance program if the grant that currently funds it is not renewed, and funding for one half of the mental health coordinator position with the other half funded through the general. That concludes my presentation on CCD fund. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Quick question. For the SROs, with these additional three, are we fully, of all of our schools, are those panels fully covered?
Chief? Actually, right now today, there's eight elementary schools with with one coming back on, Mullen Door Elementary. So in essence, you have three, three that are planned, and then we'll, we'll be looking to ask for an add of six more as we go along.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this falls under this fund or not, but I'm curious about the, I didn't even know the right way to say it, but like the efficiency of the task force, anti-gang task force grant money, right? And my understanding is, you know, we, we are the, not moderator, but fiduciary.
Fiduciary.
And that the administrative cost associated with that, we do receive some funding from the state or whatever to do that. I'm just curious if the funding, if we can prove up that the funding actually covers the costs that are associated with managing such a large program, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's not something I have Babe on hand, I'll allow others to speak to it, but that's something that we could take a look.
Anyone else? Now we have public comments. An opportunity for citizens to address the crime control and prevention district board on matters of which are scheduled on this agenda for the consideration by the board but not scheduled as a public hearing in order to address the board. During the public comments and the public meeting, appearance card must be completed and presented to the city secretary prior to the start of the work session meeting. Do we have any? Since no one has signed up during the public comments, we will move on. I believe we're about to adjourn. Yes, I will reconvene the.
I want to adjourn, but we can continue.
Okay. Okay. I didn't see that. Ah, being the no further business, I will adjourn the crime control prevention district board meeting at 11:44 AM. All right, we're going to break for lunch, and then we reconvene the budget meeting at 12:30.